I'd like to welcome you to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, please turn off your cell phones or any other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions. If anyone present is planning on presenting testimony, please sign the sheet in the back of the hearing room. Anyone who wants to have an opportunity to speak tonight will have the time to do so. Please step up to the podium when it's your turn and make sure you're clearly identify yourself for the record before you begin your testimony. We also request that you please keep your testimony focused on the relevant issues and facts for each application. Please remember, these hearings are to allow for members of the public to speak on issues related to land use applications, not to air grievances about each other or your neighbors. We will not tolerate or allow testimony that is hateful in nature and will stop your testimony if it delves into a statement on other people's character. All right, having said that, I'll call this meeting to order. It's Wednesday, the 12th of June, the time is six o'clock, the time set for the public hearing. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. I'm sure Commissioner Davidson will be here shortly. I understand there are no changes to the agenda, so we will start with our first application. Our first application is application 2019-00111-S-T-E-R-DURA. We'll first ask our staff to Brent to give us a report, and then the applicant will be able to present testimony, and then anybody that is in favor or in opposition will present testimony. Brent?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2019-00111-S-T-E is a board level time extension for the Joint Fairview Cemetery Edition. The property is generally located west of Meridian and south of Star at the intersection of Star Road and MacMillan Road. The property is located at 7860 West MacMillan Road. It contains one acre in the rural urban transition district. The applicant is requesting a two-year time extension for a preliminary plat for the Joint Fairview Cemetery Edition. The subdivision, which is Forest Cemetery, which will contain 580 lots in the form of traditional burials, infant burials, garden niches, columbarium niches, and common lots. The time extension is needed due to the limited cyclical development funding for construction and limited incremental funding. The applicant stated that the initial phase of construction has been completed with ACHD approach and right-of-way work. This is the applicant's second board granted time extension. If the board were to approve the time extension, it could be given until May 8, 2026. There are no neighbor comments on this application. Other agencies that respond to this application do not express any concerns regarding the approval of the time extension.
Okay. Brent, could you hold on just a minute?
Sure.
We're having some technical difficulties.
Okay.
Our IT guy needs to get it corrected because we have these, these hearings are being recorded and they're going also out to YouTube, and he's having some technical difficulties, and he needs to, needs to fix it. So we'll give him a few minutes.
All right.
Before we proceed. I apologize, we'll, we'll proceed in just a few minutes. All right, our IT guy just indicated that the technical difficulty has been corrected, and we will continue with the public hearing on application 2019-00111-S-T-E. Go ahead, Brent.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2019-00111-S-T-E is a board level time extension for the Joint Fairview Cemetery Edition. The property is generally located west of Meridian near the intersection of Star Road and MacMillan Road. The property is located at 7860 West MacMillan Road. It contains one acre in the RUT district. The applicant is requesting a two-year time extension for a preliminary plat for the Joint Fairview Cemetery Edition. The subdivision, which is Forest Cemetery, will contain 580 lots in the form of traditional burials, infant burials, garden niches, columbarium niches, and common lots. The time extension is needed due to the limited cyclical development funding for construction and limited incremental funding. The applicant stated that the initial phase of construction has been completed with ACHD approach and right-of-way work. This is the applicant's second board granted time extension. If the board were to approve of the time extension, it could be given until May 8, 2026. There are no neighbor comments on this application. Other agencies that respond to this application do not express any concerns regarding the approval of the time extension. Staff finds that this application complies with Ada County Code and recommends approval to the board, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions of our staff? Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here and wish to speak? Give us your name and your address for the record.
Thank you.
Samantha Hammond, 2471 South Titanium Place, Meridian, Idaho 83642.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time tonight. We are here to request a time extension for the Joint Fairview Cemetery Edition. Thanks Brent for the staff report. Like Brent said, the initial phase of construction has been completed with, and that does include the ACHD approach and right-of-way. And the second phase includes that we're working on the roadway surface, pathway, and landscaping, and the design phase of this is not included, completed yet. This design and construction is progressing at a much slower rate than typical due to the limited funding, and so that's why we're here requesting that time extension to kind of keep that progressing and moving forward. It's a very brief overview of the project. If you have any questions, I'm happy to stand for them. Thank you.
Yeah, this is the cemetery district?
Yeah.
So you do, you do get property taxes then?
Yeah.
But it's kind of limited.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And you've got it all plotted out where you're going to put the plaits and stuff?
Yep, Chairman and Commissioners, yeah, and that was our layout right there on the board.
But as I understand it, you don't actually sell the plaits, you just sell it right for people to bury somebody there, right?
Chairman and Commissioners, yeah, from my understanding as well, that is correct.
All right. Okay, any questions from the board? Just go ahead.
Just want to make sure I clarify. You, you understand this time extension and what it means in terms of future obligations, right?
Chairman, Commissioner, yes, we do.
All right, any other questions from the board? Okay. Well, thank you.
You.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wish to say anything about this application? Hearing none, I'll ask our staff, is there any additional documents need to be entered into the record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my presentation will be exhibit number 22.
Okay. All right, hearing no additional comments, I'll close the public hearing on application That application being closed, is there a motion from the board? Or I'll, I'll accept a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the time extension on application number 2019-00111-S-T-E-R-DURA to May 8, you said was the date we wanted to establish? Staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley, the time extension can be given until, let me find that really quick, is May 8, 2026.
2026.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard a motion to grant the time extension until May 8, 2026. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up, I'll, I'll open the public hearing on application 2024-00615-V, Don Wurts. I'll ask Brent to give us a report.
Dear Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2024-00615-V is a variance to the required to the minimum parcel size for a property. The property is located in southeast Boise, southeast Boise area, east of Micron and west of Lucky Peak Dam. The property is located on South Golden Eagle Lane with an address of 7101 East Columbia Road and contains approximately five acres in the Rural Preservation District. The applicant is requesting a variance to recognize a parcel created from an illegal division of land that is less than the minimum parcel size of 40 acres in the Rural Preservation District to make the property legal non-conforming and make the property eligible for building permits. The parcel has an existing single-family dwelling that was built in 1976 that is in poor condition, and the applicant would like to make repairs to the home. Some of these repairs will require a building permit, and a building permit and zoning certificate cannot be issued until the legal division is rectified. The subject property, in addition to two other parcels, which are parcels S1610234000 and parcel S16102341000, are in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 10 of Township 2 North Range 3 East. Prior to 1985, these three parcels were one parcel. Since then, the three parcels have, three parcels have been created. One of the parcels is a 60-foot strip of land owned by the J.R. Simplot Company to provide access to Simplot-owned property farther to the south. The second parcel is the five-acre subject property that's owned by Brandon and Don Wurts. And then the third property is the Jason 33.18 acre parcel that is owned by Shandra and Nilam Tari and Brandon and Don Wurts. In 1996, the previous property owner, Robert Cross, applied for a one-acre split to create the subject property. However, the application for the one-acre split was denied. Even though the split was denied, Mr. Cross sold the single-family dwelling and five acres to James and Ben Hartsfield, and Robert Cross had retained the adjacent 33.18 acres. Robert Cross then conveyed the property to someone else, and the property, the thirty, the property has changed hands a few times since then. In order to grant a variance, three findings need to be made. One, the variance should not grant a right or special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. Two, the variance relieves undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. And three, the variance should not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Staff finds that the variance does not constitute granting of a special right or privilege because there are other properties in the neighborhood which have homes on them with acreage that is less than the minimum property size. In addition, there have been similar variances granted for parcel size in this area. One variance was granted on April 12, 2000, and the other variance was granted on September 14, 2022. Staff finds that the variance relieves undue hardship as there is already an existing single-family dwelling on the property that is in dire need of repairs. Some of these repairs require building permit and zoning certificate, and the zoning certificate cannot be issued unless a variance is granted. Staff also finds that there's been no evidence entered into the record to indicate that the variance would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. There are no public comments received for this application. None of the agencies have raised any objections to the variance. Staff finds that the application complies with Ada County Code, and I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Go ahead. Could you go back to the map that shows the three splits there? So I guess my question is, can they not merge the Towarian Wurrs with the Wurrs for one parcel?
And that's, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, that might be something you want to maybe ask the applicant. I mean, that definitely is a possibility that they could merge those two parcels together. But it might be also good to talk with the applicant to see if that's a possibility or not.
What would be the total acreage if those two were combined?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I think the acreage would be about 38 acres, give or take.
So that would still be under the 40?
It would still be under the 40.
What, so on the Towarian Wurrs parcel, what, what would be allowed to be developed there under the current code? I guess basically nothing because it's not 40, and they'd have to request a variance to build something there.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, one option that they, that they would have is if the Towarian Wurrs property and the Wurrs property were together, what could occur is there could be a rezone to the rural residential district. The rural residential district would then allow for 10-acre lots, and then they would then need to go through the subdivision process to create those individual lots.
As the code sits now on the Towarian Wurrs portion, what could be built there when it's under 40?
Currently, right now, because this was an illegal division, they wouldn't be able, be able to build anything right now because we wouldn't be able to issue a zoning certificate for that property. And so right at the moment, they wouldn't be able to build anything because we'd have to rectify the legal division in order for them to build anything on the, on the two parcels.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, is the applicant here? Would you like to speak? Okay, identify yourself for the record.
Don Wurts, and of 6045 South Sweet Gum Way in Boise.
Okay.
Chairman, Commissioners, my husband and I purchased this property and with a house that was built in 1976 in poor condition. It seemed to us that it would benefit the surrounding neighbors and everyone involved, as well as ourselves, to be able to repair this house rather than leave it to degrade further. And so, yeah, our application for a variance is just to repair the existing house without other significant changes. The adjacent property that we own with the Towarries, we are not, they are the majority owners of that parcel. And so whatever is agreed upon with that parcel is subject to agreement by them.
Well, that's fine. We're only considering this application, we're not considering the potential on the other one.
Okay, yeah.
So it's just your application, you don't need to worry about the other one.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so that's, that's why we're requesting this variance, and any other questions you have, I'm open to.
All right, any questions to Ms. Wurts?
I guess I'll ask you, so why, why did it end up being two parcels, you on one and then you and another family on another? Was there any thought to merge those together?
Well, there was the possibility of merging them together. It's not necessarily something that the Towarries are interested in, as Chairman and Commissioner Beck stated, just a separate joint ownership that we have of the other parcel. And we don't totally know what the division are, how we would allocate that adjacent acreage right now. We would like to work that out in the near future, but it's subject to other development in the area that may happen in the near term, and the timing of that is uncertain and could be years out. So we don't have a definite plan for that.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. And that's the reason that you want to just worry about this particular property because you can, you can repair the home that's there if you got a, if you got a variance?
Yes, we would like to do that as soon as possible, and our family would like to move into it, so we'd like to do that as quickly as we can.
Do we have any other questions? Do you have a question, Commissioner? All right, well, thank you very much, then.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, is there any additional documents or anything that needs to be added to the record?
Mr. Chairman, my presentation will be exhibit number 22.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing on application 2024-400615-V, Don Wurts. Is there anyone, any motion or anything before the board now? What's the pleasure of the board? Is there any activity on this? I think we should grant this. I'll make a motion to, to approve the application. Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, no further discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, I'll open the public hearing on application 2024-00193-S-Z-C-D-A-P-R, River Edge Engineering. We will have our staff, Amelia, if you'd give us a report. Thank you.
Chairman and Commissioners, project number 2024-00193-ZC-D-A-S-P-R is a zoning ordinance map amendment, development agreement, subdivision, and private road application to rezone a property from the rural residential district to the rural urban transition district and to create a three-lot subdivision with a private road. The property is located at 7,000 Pear Blossom Lane and contains 16.36 acres in the rural residential district. The property is located in Cuna's area of city impact and abuts both Cuna and Meridian city limits. Most of the surrounding property is residential and agricultural uses. The property was originally an open space lot for Pear Blossom subdivision, which was created as a non-farm subdivision. This property had a note that it was restricted from development until 2018 and was considered open space until then. It is now eligible for development as long as it meets code standards of today, which requires a rezone to RUT as the minimum acreage for the RR district is 10 acres. The proposed subdivision will have three lots with one lot having frontage off of a small private road coming off of South Pear Blossom Way. The proposed subdivision and private road complies with our subdivision regulations and private road standards as conditioned. The applicant has also submitted an irrigation plan, which the Ada County engineer has reviewed. The preliminary plat will have to have easements on all irrigation lines that cross one property to serve other properties, and to have easements around public roadways and subdivision boundaries for utilities, drainage, and irrigation. ACHD is requiring the property owner dedicate 35 feet of right-of-way from the west property line for the future construction of K Avenue to extend and make improvements to Pear Blossom Way with planter strip sidewalk and a 50-foot cul-de-sac turnaround. Pave the proposed private way at least 20 feet wide and 30 feet into the site beyond the edge of pavement of public streets, and install tapers abutting the existing roadway edge, and to submit civil plans to ACHD for review and approval prior to impact fees being assessed. Other comments from agencies were incorporated into the staff report and findings. Boise Project Board of Control commented that all irrigation or drainage ditches and pressurized irrigation lines that cross one property to serve another must be protected by an easement. Central District Health commented that the developer will need to submit a land development application, fee per lot, detailed site plan, test holes, and a full engineer report in order to lift sanitary restrictions. City of Cuna commented that they are in support of the project going through the county prior to application submittal. Idaho Department of Environmental Quality commented with general advice and comments. The Ada County engineer commented that they are in support as long as the plat is revised slightly according to his comments, and that the private road be constructed to his standards. No comments from neighbors were received. Staff finds that the application complies with Ada County Code, and both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval to the board. This presentation will be known as exhibit number 51, and I will stand for any questions.
Any questions? Okay, all right. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Kevin?
I'm Kent.
Kent.
With River Ridge Engineering.
Okay.
We're at 2447 South Vista Avenue, Boise, Idaho. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing our application, and thanks, Amelia, for all your hard work. You know, Tim and his sons built the house that's on the property now. They're just looking to subdivide it into another two lots and maybe build a couple more homes on there for, for the family and everybody there. Pretty simple subdivision. I think that we have crossed all of our Ts on this one, and I'm here to take any questions that you have.
All right, any questions? All right, no questions? Thank you. Thank you. All right, Amelia, do we have any, any additional documents need to be added to the record?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing on application 2024-00193-S-Z-C-D-A-P-R, River Ridge Engineering. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application 2024-00193-ZC-D-A- application 2024-00193-ZC-DA-S-PR Starry Night subdivision, based on revising findings of fact and conclusions of the law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard tonight.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll next take up, and I will open the public hearing on application 2024-00636-V-CU-MSP Rodney Evans and Partners LLC. And we'll ask our staff, Michella, is it Michalla?
Michaela.
Michaela. Okay, Michaela Owens, give us her staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Today I'm going to be presenting project number 2024-00636-V-CU-MSP, an application by Rodney Evans and Partners, seeking a variance, conditional use, and master site plan approval for outdoor-only self-service storage. This slide shows an overview of the area where the site is located. It is on the south side of West Cherry Lane, near the intersection with Black Cat Road, abutting Meridian city limits on the east side of the lot. The property is currently zoned rural-urban transition and is located in Meridian's area of city impact. Meridian has provided a letter allowing this application to be processed by Ada County. This slide shows a closer view of the site located at 5103 West Cherry Lane, which currently houses a single-family home. This slide shows the proposed site plan with 36 vehicle and trailer storage areas. There's a 20 to 22-foot-wide drive aisle that's provided for fire access and traffic circulation that accesses the site off West Cherry Lane. The spaces are all about 10 feet wide, and the depth of the spaces ranges from 20 feet to 35 feet. There is a 10-foot space that's provided between each storage area to provide buffering and meet the requirements of the specific use standards for outdoor-only self-service storage. This existing single-family home that's currently on the site will remain on the site as a dwelling in addition to this proposed use. The project boundary is set back 100 feet from residential zoning and is located just outside of a flood hazard zone that's created by Ten Mile Creek on the southwest border of the site. The applicant is requesting a variance for the minimum lot size of five acres that's required for this use. The property was reduced through a governmental taking for canal crossing at the northwest corner of the property. It is now 4.83 acres. In order to grant a variance, three findings must be met. The first is that the variance shall not grant a rider special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the base district. Outdoor-only self-service storage is a use that is allowed conditionally in the RUT zone and would be allowed in the district on other lots that are similarly sized. The second finding is that the variance relieves an undue hardship due to characteristics of the site. The property was reduced through governmental action for the canal crossing from the required five acres. Otherwise, it would meet the required dimensional standards for the zone and for this use. The variance shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. This application was transmitted to relevant agencies, and none of the comments received have indicated that it would be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. This project also meets the specific use standards required for this outdoor-only self-service storage, excepting the five-acre lot size requirement. This application was transmitted on April 12, 2024, and the following are key comments that were received. Ada County Highway District is requiring that the two existing driveways that are on the site be closed, and that the new driveway be 20 feet wide and paved 30 feet into the site and aligned with Montgomery Way across West Cherry Lane, which is currently shown on the proposed site plan. Central District Health is requiring that an accessory use application be submitted to them. Meridian Fire is requesting that the access road be all-weather, that appropriate turning radius be maintained, and that fire extinguishers be available every 75 feet on the site. Staff is recommending the following conditions of approval: that appropriate wheel restraints be provided to prevent vehicles from overhanging their allotted spaces, that the ADA accessible space is clearly demarcated on the site, and that the surface material for the project be paved or another dustless material approved by the county engineer. Staff did have a condition that was requiring a lighting plan be provided prior to building permits being issued. The applicant has requested that this condition be removed, as no lighting is currently proposed with this project. The removal of this condition would need to be included in any motion that approves this application. Staff is also requiring that Ada County Highway District approve the driveway, that an accessory use permit be approved by Central District Health, that Meridian Fire has the opportunity to approve the fire flow, and the Ada County engineer can review and approve any drainage and grading plans that are necessary. A zoning compliance inspection will be required after construction is complete, and a term of approval is that this use expires within five years or upon annexation into a city. Staff does recommend that the board approve this project, subject to the conditions of approval and the site plan that was revised and received May 21, 2024. This presentation will be added to the record as exhibit 32, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for our staff? Yes, go ahead.
My question is the, the lighting plan. Was there, what was the specific reason why the staff recommended that we have, that that be a condition?
So landscaping plans and lighting plans are required for master site plan approval. So they provided a landscaping plan and not a lighting plan. Those are usually required as conditions of approval, just because we believe that they'd have, need some type of landscaping and possibly some type of lighting. But since they're indicating no lighting is required, it's, where staff is supportive of waiving that requirement.
Even with this volume of, of people going in and out?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, yes, they have indicated they're not going to be having any light. Their hours of operation are mostly daylight hours, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
What are the wheel restraints that you're referring to?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davinson, those are the concrete blocks. Or it can be, it can be an alternative design if that works better for the applicant, but it's to prevent anything from rolling outside of the space. So it's usually the concrete blocks you see in parking lots.
And what were the ADA issues that you also mentioned?
No ADA issues per se, just indicating that they have an ADA, they have an American with Disabilities accessible space, which they are showing on their site plan, just needs to be marked as such, so it'd have some type of signage and striping.
Is that for the customers who come?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Leslie Prendeville with Rodney Evans and Partners, 1450 West Bannick Street, Boise, 83702. I don't have anything further to add to Michaela's presentation, but I would like to say that the design team and the owner reviewed the conditions of approval, and we are in agreement with all of the conditions.
All right. Any questions of the applicant? Go ahead.
I just asked the same question I asked staff, in terms of why, based on the plan and the usage, why do you think lighting wouldn't be required?
Commissioner, with the, the restriction of this being a five-year temporary use, we didn't feel like lighting was necessary, especially related to the hours of use. So we did not submit a lighting plan at this, at this time. Obviously, if there were a reason to provide lighting, we would prepare that plan as required by the county for, for approval.
So it's going to, it's only going to be five years, and then you may anticipate using it for another?
At this point in time, no, we don't have any expectations of going beyond the five years. But if that were to be something that the owner decides to address, then we will take care of that condition if needed.
Okay. Any other questions?
So this is for storage of vehicles?
Yes.
Is that the sole use?
Yes, it is.
And then customers won't have 24/7 access?
I'm, so I would like to say I'm stepping in for Ben Semple tonight, who is the original planner or designer on this project. I would have to defer to the owner of the property for those specific hours. So if, if the owner is here, I would, I would like to let them speak to that.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to testify on this issue? I don't see anybody. Are any documents needed to be added to the record?
Mr. Chair, no.
Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing on application 2024-00636-V-CU-MSP. And I'd call for, ask for a motion or a discussion. Anybody wish to discuss it? All right, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve application number 2024-00636-V-CU-MSP Rodney Evans and Partners, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law contained in the staff report and the testimony heard tonight. I suppose with the additional condition of the lighting plan is removed.
Anything else?
Anything else, please?
That sounds great to me.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I'll next open a public hearing on application 2024-00525-V Suzanne Canova. We'll ask our staff, Leon Letson, to give us a report.
All right, thank you Chairman and Commissioners. The item for you is a variance to allow an existing accessory structure to encroach into the rear yard setback. The applicant is Suzanne Canova. The subject property is located near the city of Starr, west of Pollard Lane. Surrounding uses include rural residences, rangeland, and single-family homes. It's a 10.77-acre property in the RR district. On site is an existing single-family home and several accessory structures that support the agricultural use of the land. Pictured here is the accessory structure that they're seeking relief to that setback for. Also identified as subject drain-filled well, typical things that we have on our site plans. It sits 11 feet from the rear property line, 25 feet is the typical setback required within the RR district for a rear setback. In terms of agency comments, we received two, one from the Ada County Building Official and one from Central District Health. For the building official, just going to require a permit down the road to make sure the, the structure meets code. They also have some plans to renovate the structure, which is part of the reason for their request. There was a miscellaneous inspection performed by the building official in 2022 to identify some things that needed to be done, which I believe those have all occurred at this point. And Central District Health basically just will require their typical accessory use application fee, a detailed site plan and floor plans, if there's any revisions necessary for the existing septic system. We received no comments from the public on this one. Staff has found this to be in compliance with Ada County code, specifically the section concerning variances. You've been, you've seen these a couple times today, tonight already, but there are the three findings for a variance: that it will not grant a rider special privilege, that's not otherwise allowed in the base district, that it relieves an undue hardship due to the characteristics of the site, and that the variance shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. So the structure has existed on-site since the early 1990s. As detailed in staff's report on the project, it was gifted to the property owner from a neighbor and installed in its current location based on the uses occurring on the property. And, let's see, there's also some topography issues and the other agricultural uses occurring east of the site. So those reasons is why they located where they did. They did not get a building permit at the time, so they didn't come through our office, which if they had, we would have informed them of the required 25-foot setback. As noted, there are no concerns from commenting agencies or any member of the public, so we do not believe that there's an issue with it being detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. So with that, staff is recommending the board approve the variance 2024-00525-V, and I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, is there any questions? Okay, no questions. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to come speak?
Thank you Commissioners. I have to plead ignorance. I'm Suzanne Canova, 4393 North Pollard Lane in Starr, Idaho, 83669. The building was donated to me several decades ago by a farmer friend, and he put it together for me and just knew it was far enough from where it needed to be. It's also located, property is mostly hilltop. The hay trucks turn around right in front of it, so for that reason it is set back a little ways out of the barnyard. And when I called about this building and asked if I could improve it, put water in it, they said, "You really can't have a building there." That's when I first realized how out of sync I was. So, thank you for hearing about this. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Looks like you're somewhat far away from any other houses. How close is the closest neighbor's house to this?
Probably five acres. There were a few cows that used to rest in the shade of this building, but they're not there anymore. I bought this property from the Moils, that have since passed on, Rex and Marge, and it was their ranch land. But there is somebody that does own the property to the west of it, doing some developing, but nothing that's close to that building. And they didn't object at all to the, during the neighborhood meeting, so.
Did anybody show up?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Actually, I built a bonfire and had food, so. That's how I got them there. Made them sign, make sure they didn't surface later.
And how did that go? Everybody was on board?
Yeah, everybody said they didn't care.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to testify on this project? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on application 2024-00525-V Suzanne Canova. Did you need to add anything?
Chairman, I'll add my presentation as an exhibit to the record.
Okay, thank you. There's been an exhibit added to the record. All right, the hearing's closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application number 2024-00525-V slash V Suzanne Canova, based on the finding of fact and conclusions of law containing the staff report and the document, and the information we've heard tonight.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next item up, I'll open the public hearing on application 2024-00522-V Harold Schlatter. I'll ask for our staff, Leon Letson, to give us a report. Leon?
Thank you Chairman and Commissioners. The application before you is a variance to allow two proposed structures in the side yard setback. The applicant is Harold Schlatter II. Hopefully I pronounced his name correctly. I apologize if I didn't. The subject property is located near the city of Eagle at the end of U Estates Road, within the Clearview Estates subdivision. It is a 4.84-acre property in the RUT district. On site is an existing single-family home, as well as some accessory structures. The proposed accessory structures will be 600 and 400 square feet in size. They're pictured here north of the existing shop. That is a legal non-conforming structure on-site that also encroaches into that side yard setback and east of an orchard area. The buildings will be located behind that existing shop. The setback proposed was not defined by the applicant in their application. They identified a range of 11 feet to 25 feet for the proposed setback, and they can detail for you where exactly they would like that, and you could set a specific condition of approval to mark the distance that you allow them to encroach if you do ultimately approve the application. 25 feet is the required setback within this zone for the side yard. In terms of agency comments, same as last time, our building official in the Health District. Building official has no issues, but will require a building permit for the new structures and, as well as building permits for any retroactive structures that were built after the year 2000 that are 200 square feet in size, or are 200 square feet in size. The Health District will also require, again, their accessory use application fee and a detailed site plan and floor plan, just to determine if there are any needed upgrades to the existing septic system. In terms of comments from the public, we In terms of comments from the public, we did receive two, and both were opposed to the project. The first was from a neighbor down the road who is concerned about the proposed uses of the accessory structures and stating that there's no guarantee how they'll be used moving forward. The applicant has mentioned in their detailed letter that they are there to support the agricultural uses of their property, particularly the sort of hay and other items for animals they keep on the property. There's also some issue raised with past uses of the property that aren't really subject to this application regarding a variance, but claims made regarding a day, the site being used as a daycare, an event center, and a short-term rental. There are no active code enforcement cases on the property related to those uses, and short-term rentals, we do not regulate in Ada County. Number three, the neighbor to the west is concerned about the negative impacts that the structures would have on their property values. They're also concerned about impacts to their views associated with the structures, and I believe the applicant's going to provide some detail on what the structures will look like, how tall they'll be, et cetera, when they come up to talk to you. And then finally, the neighbor to the west states that there's room on the subject property to locate these structures outside of the setback, so for that reason they don't believe the variance should be granted. In terms of project findings, as you've read the staff report, staff has recommended approval of the variance. The reason being is within this subdivision, there are numerous structures with similar setbacks. The location requested is based on the existing uses of the site, an effort to minimize removal of mature landscaping, and finally that there were no concerns received from commenting agencies. Obviously, you do have comments received from the public that are not in support of this project. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval or that the board approve this project. Item number two zero two four zero zero five eight two dash V, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? All right. Were there any previous code enforcement cases that were sustained here?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, I reached out to code enforcement and discussed this with the applicant. I believe there were complaints filed, and our code enforcement division looked into them, but there was no official enforcement case opened based on the information they got from the property owner.
And do you know if there, if you are going to need to issue any retroactive building permits for any other structures?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, I will defer to our permitting team and our building official for that. There is perhaps another structure that's over 200 square feet in size that might need another building permit. It's well outside of the setbacks though, so it wouldn't require another public hearing for that, it would just require a building permit.
And then you determined that due to the conditions of the site, a variance would be warranted? What were the the conditions you identified?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner, I identified the existing uses on the property and the request to locate these in close proximity to those, the applicant's desire to minimize the removal of mature landscaping, and then, as mentioned before, within the subdivision, there are several structures that are well inside of the 25-foot required setback. So that's the reasoning from staff found in my report.
So I, it's hard for me to tell from the the picture here, but on the the right side of the fenced orchard, is there mature landscaping, you know?
Yeah, this looks to be, and I'll defer to the applicant to describe that area, it does appear to be more pasture area. See some, a large tree there potentially, but certainly something to have the applicant detail on their testimony for you.
And then just one other question, in this zone, what what kind of agricultural uses are allowed?
Yeah, you know, the the keeping of animals on a property like this is certainly allowed, and I believe you can see they have a, looks like a chicken coop there, I believe they have horses on site. Again, I, all of those are allowed uses within this zoning districts.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Question.
Go ahead.
The existing shop that's in that picture is, is that one of the buildings you were talking about that would need a variance?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, no, that one is existing, and it's been identified as legal non-conforming, it predates code requirement for this type of structure. It does exist within that 25-foot side yard setback however, but there's no need for a variance for that, given its history and how it came to be, so.
All right, any other questions? Good evening.
Hello. My name is Harold Schlatter, and we do want to address just a couple of the items that were brought up, and hopefully any other questions that you have. But this is my wife Sarah, and she's going to start off with some of the.
Hi, we are located at 7905 North View Estates Road in Meridian Idaho 83646. I would like to respond first to the public comments that were received by two of our neighbors. The comment first regard from the Hoffs actually had nothing to do with our project, but were random complaints about us and activities that they think that we are doing on our own property, including renting a daycare and renting an event center, neither of which are true. However, we do have children, and we homeschool, and they are quite active in various groups, including 4H and FFA. We do enjoy having people over in the summer, and their comments basically had nothing to do with our project. The comment submitted by the Hines, I believe you might have the picture of the construction material, that was a picture submitted or taken in 2020, when my son, who was 12 years old at the time, and a friend were building a fort. They were going through the neighborhood collecting random building materials from other building sites and storing it in that area. I do believe we have a picture of what that product, that area currently looks like.
Ma'am?
The behind shop.
Could you restate what the issue is you're responding to?
Sure, the neighbors' complaints, they submitted pictures of an area that they believe stores junk, and the picture was actually from three years ago, and it does not currently look like that. So it was an outdated picture that they submitted in an attempt to say that our property is not in good condition. Furthermore, I do, they, as for their concerns that these loafing sheds would be blocking a view or affect their view from their front door, I do find it curious that they did not take a picture from their front door, because if they did, that picture would show that their view is actually a hedge of mature evergreens upwards of 30 feet tall, blocking our loafing sheds. And that's the picture of shed location.
Up here.
And so that is actually what's blocking their view of these loafing sheds. Furthermore, if they have concerns about some of the equipment that we store in our property, like the porta potties they mentioned, which we do use during the summer when we have church groups over, the loafing sheds would actually block their view of these items, if they could actually see them through the evergreens. In fact, the pictures that they submitted of our backyard could only be taken through, going through the evergreens to take that picture.
And then I would like to address just some of the specifics. First of all, I was kind of disappointed when I found out because the neighbors directly that, to the west of us, I had actually sought them out beforehand before even proceeding with this. I talked to them, they had some requests for a privacy fence and a couple other things that they said were unsightly they did not want to look at. Actually went through a process with them and built the privacy fences, did everything that they had requested of me before I submitted this, and I was told that I was, that I would have their blessing on this. So I was a little disappointed to find out that after all the work that we had done, that was taken back. But just to go ahead and adjust a couple of the pictures, or excuse me, a couple of the fin, questions, and I think you had mentioned one of them. If you want to put up the loafing shed picture, there was a complaint that we were going to put up a structure that was going to be 20 feet tall. This is what the loafing shed was to look like, simply three sides, no doors, no windows, one side completely open. It is intended for agricultural storage, hay primarily, and some straw. It has eight-foot walls and at its peak should be no more than 12 feet, not 20, which is well below the line of evergreens and not visible. Also, just to jump ahead a little bit, as far as being unsightly, if the request is for us to push it 15 feet into the non-conforming, or into the conforming setback, which we are able to do, this is only about location, that 15 feet would just be 15 feet farther from their view and would not change anything on that side. If you want to put up the picture that says site plan full, this is a complete look at our property. Ada County actually has rules for building anything within 100 feet of the Boise River. So almost that entire section across the back that you see that is wide open is currently lawn, and anything to be built back there would require this exact same variance. Also, we learned afterwards, the barn, which I think was in question earlier, is fully permitted. That was built a couple of years ago, and last spring, when Lucky Peak was letting out water, not at historic levels, but at at the higher level of what they normally do, our barn actually was about a, about a foot of water, and so we had to relocate animals into separate pens. So the reason I don't really want to put anything else there is because it's all in the flood zone. It's something that will flood likely every couple of years, and that would be not a great place to put something. If you want to do the site plan zoomed in, this is a little bit tighter shot of where we are. So the existing shop down at the bottom was from when the house was built back in the 70s, and this was really an attempt to kind of conform with the current layout of everything that is there. If we were to bring those sheds without tearing out the the mature trees and the orchard, simply 15 feet in and put it directly behind the shop, we would block the roll-up garage door that is in the back of the shop, which would eliminate a lot of access for us to get things in and out of the shop. I talked already about if we moved it back to where our current openings are, we've got floodplain issues as well as setbacks from the river. I think, thank you.
Is, are there any questions from the board? Your questions are the applicant or the, or our staff?
The applicant.
Okay, go ahead.
So you, you said the, over by the barn, first, first of all, you're, this, this is for storage for animals, correct?
Not animals, just, oh, the barn, yeah, the barn, we have sheep and goats that live in the barn.
And then the proposed shed is for, it, things for them?
For hay, et cetera.
So closer to the barn would be better?
Well, we have a couple of different issues there. First of all, we have access to it, so when we have things delivered, if you go to the the full, you can see down at the bottom is the cul-de-sac, so that's our street access. There is currently a path that we do drive, to drive to the back of the shop that would go right up there to where the proposed sheds are, that would be for easy and simple delivery. There is no access to get a car or a trailer, we would literally be moving everything by hand one at a time all the way back there. And so if we had, for example, a delivery of an entire trailer of hay that will get us through the winter, and I've got 100 bales of hay that I need to move, and I'm moving them all by hand back into a section that could potentially flood in the spring, it does become a lot of extra work.
And your original application said 11 to 25 feet, so you could, you could make it within the, in the ordinance, right? If you moved it to 25 feet as your original, 11 to 25 feet, that's what the staff said.
So I believe what that was when we were talking is the the distance of the structures, and so we didn't realize there was a 25-foot setback when I started this process. It was only when we went to go ahead and get the permit that I was told that we had to be 25 feet. And so we actually had kind of a paver foundation that already laid, it's not concrete, and it's just pavers and sand, to have it built on, and those are just past the 10 feet away from the property line, which is where we thought that we needed to be. If we were to pull them to the 25 feet away, that's when it would block the access to the back of the shop. So right now, it was actually designed to come up to the side. I know my, my artwork might not be exact on that, but the front of the proposed sheds line up with the backside of the shop, and they're at different depths, one's 15 feet deep and one is 20 feet deep because of the nature of the angles that we're dealing with, so the second one went back a little bit farther to get to the same place.
So there are two sheds instead of one, they have, you need two sheds instead of one?
One is 20 by 15, and one is 20 by 20. That was, that was our original plan, yeah, and that's what we were requesting.
Okay, all right, I think those are my questions for now.
Mr. Chair? Yes, go ahead. You mentioned some conversations with the neighbors about privacy issues, what were some of the things discussed related to privacy?
So the picture that they kept from 2020 of the wood that was piled over when my son was 12, and he and his friends were building a fort, they were very upset that there was a fort that they could see, they did not like that. They said it was unsightly, and so that was, that was the privacy fence. We built a 30-foot long privacy fence, which I went back and forth with the neighbors to make sure that both sides hid it so that they could not see that fort from, from their front door.
So with regard to this application, was there any discussion of planting additional trees or bushes or anything like that?
I'm more than happy to, I've actually talked to them and told them that if they have something specific that they would like, you know, I can plant a tree or something back there, it doesn't, it doesn't affect me in any way to have something like that back there. I'm okay with that.
And did you have any issues with code enforcement in the past?
No, we've had code enforcement called out by those neighbors about that fort, and also about the daycare thing, and we had a sheriff show up to our home, we went over everything in detail, they did their research, and came back to us and said that there was nothing that was wrong.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we normally have a sign-up sheet, and I don't have a sign-up sheet on this application. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Oh, you wish to speak?
Yeah, I want to speak regarding the application.
Sure, come on up, state your name.
Yes, good evening Commissioners, my name is William Hines, and I live at, let me get my notes here. I live at 7893 North View Estates Road, and we do share the property line where applicant wants to place these buildings. I do want to address a couple of things here that, before I get to my notes, one is the picture. That probably was taken about 2020, and it stayed in that same condition until about a week ago, when, after they saw the picture that I attached, they cleaned up the area. In the past, there was code enforcement, Kevin from code enforcement came out because he had to tell him to get some of that off of my property. So this has been a property that has been a problem to the neighbors, as you could see from Mrs. Hoff's letter and from my own. The one thing to understand is yes, our front door is directly across from where he proposes to come within the property line. I'm not, I understand he has a right to build structures on his property. However, I don't think it's necessary on this 4.8 acres of property for him to build it that close to the property line. Another thing I think we need to understand is, he's saying this is an undue hardship. I don't think it's a hardship, much less an undue hardship, and the word undue means something. It means beyond the usual. Do we have the overhead? Could we get the overhead picture up there again? Okay, can I approach it, sir, just a little bit?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
On this thing, the only building that was there when the Schlatters bought the property was the existing shop. All of those other structures and everything, this open yard, with the exception of, I think, a tree, ball yard, little bit of landscaping along the applicant's border, which has since affected. The coop, the barn, the greenhouse, the fenced orchard, which in reality is where the animals are. No trees in there, there's llamas and sheep in there. All of that stuff, he's put in six buildings and now proposes to put in buildings seven and eight. That's fine if he didn't cram them back up against and directly across from our front door. If there is, is my timer?
Yeah, if you could wrap it up.
This does not equal an undue hardship because it's something he created himself, and he has plenty of other places to put this stuff. And, you know, I had some other comments to make, but I think it's just important to note that a person can't create their own undue hardship and then seek to, or their own hardship and seek to benefit from it. He's got plenty of room to move these 25 feet away, and if that's all I can accomplish, well, that's 15 more feet than where he wants to put them. And that's all we request. And that's all we request, and we don't feel... We also don't feel like placing conditions on it is going to do much good. So, anyways, our objection is the placement of these. We never gave blessing, and we're opposed to it. I'll wrap it up with that.
You keep saying "we" and "our." Are you in charge of a group or...?
My wife and I.
Oh, okay.
My wife, Nancy.
Okay, well, that's good. I'm sorry.
My son Hunter lives with us, too.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good. I appreciate that. Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Is there questions of the testimony? Go ahead.
Well, okay, I'll ask you, you know, just... We're not talking about a lot of distance here. I mean, he could move it a few more feet, and it would be within the code. So, I'm curious, what is sort of the hardship that you feel it causes you to just be slightly closer to the fence line?
Well, I think the closer it is to the fence line, the more it affects property values. If you have buildings sitting directly across your front door on the property line, that will possibly, and I, in my opinion, will affect the property value of our house. Let me say this. I think the only reason that they've placed everything back there in that area is because they don't want to see it from their house. Their view is out a different direction. But we see it from ours, and when it's right there, boom, across from our front door, which it would be, yes, that is a big effect, and the further back it can go, the better as far as we're concerned.
Well, they testified that there's trees or shrubs there that block your view of it.
I've put some trees and shrubs in. I would say that I don't think putting in trees and shrubs along your property line should make you forfeit, whether it's 15 feet or 25 feet of setback.
I guess I'm just trying to get into the, you know, the harm that you say it could be caused. I mean, if it's largely an issue of your view, I mean, we could put a condition that he plants more trees or more bushes. I mean, wouldn't that ameliorate the situation?
They're going to be pretty close, and it's still very close to the property line. I can put a fence in, too. I've already started pricing it. But then, that's on me. Then, I have to spend money to try and make it look better. And I will say, you've seen the pictures, that was all beautiful yard when they moved And then, they've just left it go. So, they plant landscaping. Are they going to take care of it? I doubt it.
Any other questions?
You heard the previous testimony about the flooding of the river. What's your experience been with, you know, seeing if the river floods into the yard?
Well, typically, what happens if you don't want that to happen is just like our house. They build them up. You know, you raise the level, and then you don't have that problem. We had water, too, where we had the prior owner, I didn't build the house, build it up. That's what they do down in the floodplains. So, he could put it someplace else. As far as any trees blocking it, on that one side where the barn is, no, there's no trees that would block these buildings. So, he has other places he can put them.
All right, thank you.
I do have a question. Could you put up that picture that had the tree, the tree line? No, not that one.
No, sorry. Give me a second.
Not that one either.
Thank you.
Okay, right there. Now, is that the tree line that you planted?
Yes, that's tree line. And as you can see, that tree line, the lower branches are failing like a lot of trees that way do, and it just doesn't conceal this property that much.
Well, it looks like it's pretty high, isn't it?
Well, it's high, but it's thin at the bottom. That's why we would have to put in a fence because...
You can see through the little...
Yes, you can see through and, yeah.
Okay, because that, as I recall from the picture, that was a pretty strong barrier between your properties.
There are trees there, but definitely you can see through them.
Okay, all right. And that is your main objection, is that, as you can see through the...
Well, my main objection is, one, there's no undue hardship on Mr. Schlatter, and we can see. And I do believe that buildings that close to the property line, and as he showed, the other building that close to the property line, that's why, you know, a lot of those trees were planted before Schlatters moved in there, and it was nice yard. They weren't put there as a screen. They help, but they're mostly just landscaping. And they were fine when there was landscaping, and there weren't all these buildings and stuff right there.
Those do appear to be mature trees. They've been there a long time.
They've been there a while, yes. Probably, based on when the house was built, close to 20, 18 to 20 years.
All right, well, thank you. Is there any other questions? Go ahead.
So, where's your house in relation to this picture? So, is this... This isn't...
We can see a little bit of the structure through there.
Right here?
Yes.
That's your house? You can see through the trees?
I can see, yeah, through the trees when I come out. Our front door is right there. When we walk out the front door, it's like, well, probably across the driveway, a little bit of grass, those trees, and then the property.
Okay, thank you.
Not for him, well, either one, but staff. So, where would the building be in relation to the map then, in those trees?
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, either one of you.
Where he has those concrete blocks put in.
That's where...
That's where he proposes to put it.
Chairman Commissioners, I believe that to be the case, but the applicant could address that in their rebuttal, just to confirm.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
All right. Chairman Commissioners, I will note that during the applicant's testimony, they brought up the Boise River Greenway overlay, which is a required 100-foot setback from the high water mark. So, this property would be impacted by that. It was not something covered in staff's review of the project because none of the structures were proposed to be anywhere near that area. So, just wanted to confirm that that detail does exist for the property, that there is kind of a non-buildable area along the northeastern portion of the applicant's property. No, certainly not all the property. I just...
Just a portion of it.
Yeah.
Well, I guess my question then would be, you probably didn't prepare a map with the line that shows where on the property it wouldn't be built.
Chairman Commissioners, I would have to provide that to you, and we would probably want to table this in order to get you that information. But yeah, it's, you know, in general, 100-foot setback. Here's where we're... Here's the property here. High water mark is likely the bank of this. Again, this is a bit speculation. So, yeah, this area would be impacted by that, but to what degree would require some additional research from staff.
All right. Any?
Let me just ask staff again. Does that restriction include just simple sheds?
Chairman Commissioners, any structure of the nature requested by the applicant that can't be located in that 100-foot setback without approval of a variance? But in general, we're not supposed to have structures like that in that 100-foot area.
But it's within our purview to grant a variance to build a shed in the floodplain?
Chairman, it's not... Well, it is technically the floodplain. It's the Boise River Greenway overlay district. So, it's a little bit different than typical just floodplain. It's a 100-foot setback from the high water mark, which is normally the floodway. And it's a special section of Ada County Code that just tries to keep structures outside of that 100-foot area.
Okay, thank you.
And I should note, all the pictures shared with you will be exhibits to the record tonight, as well as my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to testify in this? Because again, I don't have a sign-up sheet. Apparently not. Okay. The applicant, you are able to make a rebuttal if you'd like, a rebuttal closing statement.
Sure, I would like to address just a couple of the things. If you can put up the zoomed-in site plan? I think... Oh, actually, no, I'm so sorry. Let's do the site plan full. Even with the 100 feet, that would require, I've been told, several different things, the river district and other places, to also sign off on it. The location that's labeled "barn" is outside of that 100 feet. It's just outside of there, and it was under a foot of water, and we had to relocate animals. So, regardless of whether or not it's allowed to build there, I know that the property does. And it wasn't that the river breached the berm in the back, it was ground swell, just from the height of the river that actually just came up underneath that forced us to relocate the animals. And then, if we can open up the... The... I'm sorry, I'm trying to think of the list. Was the one with the trees that had the cinder blocks in it? That one? Yep. That one we keep going back to. Those mature evergreens were easily 20 years old when we bought the house. I know that the Hines next door bought their house three months before we did, and so, I'm pretty sure that they didn't bring those in. They've been there the whole time. In fact, there's one, if you kind of look at the corner of the cinder block, there's a small Leland Cypress that's about seven feet tall, because it did look like there was an opening that was starting to open up that was causing a view. And we were also doing the same thing, just trying to separate our property so we weren't looking through it. We planted that tree last year to take a break, or to, excuse me, to enclose a small section of that. I'm also, I'm not sure because I didn't watch, but I know about a week and a half ago, the Hines had several trees removed from that area. I'm not sure exactly what it looked like before that. I took this picture after I realized that was going to be an issue. There was one other thing I was going to address, and I didn't write it down.
I would like to speak to an alternative proposed location, besides being close to the 100-foot setback from the river and also being an area that floods. It also has no driving access to it. And so, that's where we mentioned that in order to load our loafing sheds with hay, we would have to hand cart every single bale into that area because there's no driving access to that. So, if we were to put the loafing shed behind the barn, it would... Our boys would not enjoy moving over 100 bales of hay into that location.
Might be good for them.
Maybe. And we do have... So, we don't have horses, but we do have alpacas, and so, they can't eat alfalfa. So, we do have two different types of hay. We have a grass hay that we stock for them, as well as alfalfa for the sheep and goats. I know what the other thing was, the question about the picture from 2020 and what it looked like. So, our son started doing that, and we actually had told him to put the wood back there. And unfortunately, I hadn't really paid a lot of close attention. I hadn't realized how much he had been able to collect. And so, once we did find out about that, we did go back and reorganize. He had some of the sheets of plywood and stuff that were leaning over the property line. At that point, we went back there, and we cleaned everything out. When I found out this was going to be a picture, we did rake some dead leaves that had fallen and had been there over the winter, and so, we did rake that out just to clean it up before we took that picture. But that organization is something that has been several years now.
Any questions? Go ahead.
From the picture here, it looks like that building, if that is the, basically, the base of the building where those cinder blocks are?
Yes.
That's a slope that goes down into the orchard?
The space between the shop and the orchard.
Yeah, so, this picture is actually taken from just past the corner of the shop, facing down, and it's a little bit, because I had to zoom out, so it's got a little bit of a bow to it as well. And so, there is, from the front, where the loafing sheds would end, there is a small slope that goes down. It is at a higher elevation, yeah, which initially, we thought was also a great idea, knowing that we had ground swell problems, to have something that was a little bit higher that we wouldn't have to worry about. And then, on the right-hand side, the orchard, we planted that orchard in 2019. We have several trees that are at about 20 feet. We've got some pretty good and...
Very mature trees.
Starting to very much mature fruit trees.
So, does the river flood into the orchard?
Part of the orchard, yes, but not fully.
If you put back the full one, I can see how much... So, the back of the fenced orchard, that, at the back of the fenced orchard, you're actually going to hit that 100 feet. There is a small hill right there that the water came up to, but not... I don't know if I can... I wish I had a pointer. At the top corner, that part did not get water down across the fenced orchard into the barn. Where the circle is, where the line is at the back of the house, that did not ground swell. And then, coming down towards the property, that back corner is also a little bit higher, but well within the 100 feet. So, almost all of the ground swell water happened from, if you were to take that white ... That was a bocce ball court or something, and extend that out, the water was from that side. So, it was not on this side, and it was not up.
Over here.
Yeah, so, if you were to take that line and extend it out...
A path of the picture.
That's where the ground swell was. The bottom part of the picture did not have ground swell. But now, we're back to going within 100 feet of the river, and the river district told me that there's 26 different places that have to sign off on us doing anything back there.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, even team, I think, require... You can build up... You can build in places where, as long as you accommodate, build up and so forth, you know, those kinds of areas. But, okay, thank you.
And I think we would be getting another variance. So, we're right back in the same spot, doing the exact same thing.
Okay.
But your neighbors wouldn't have the exact...
Exactly.
I think they would.
So, what kind of greenhouse is it? Is it just a small little greenhouse?
It's a six-foot by eight-foot greenhouse. It stands about this tall, and we use it to put over the peppers during the first freeze so that... Because then, when it warms back up... The only two buildings that we have built since we've gotten there is that chicken coop, which is a 10-by-10 chicken coop, and the barn, which is permitted. Those are the only two structures that we have put on the property.
I mean, I'm just wondering about moving the garden and the greenhouse, you know, to make room.
It's all cemented and raised flower beds.
Yeah, they're raised flower beds with retaining walls, and it would be... I mean, obviously, anything is doable if you have a big enough bulldozer, but it would be a significant alteration.
And we actually have arranged our entire animal section so that it is in full view from our house because we enjoy our animals. My son shows all of them at the fair. His alpaca was a grand champion at the fair this year, and so, we like to watch our animals. So, everything was strategically placed with our view in mind to see all of this so that we can see the animals. And so, that's why we chose the locations we did.
Any other questions? Any other comments you'd like to make in rebuttal?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Your turn.
Thank you. All right. Any other documents needed to be added to the file?
No, Chairman.
I will then close the public hearing on application 2024-00582-V Harold Schlatter. Is there anyone who wants to kick this off and make a motion?
I'll ask staff if you have the three conditions for granting a variance, if you could put them on the screen.
Mr. One's... Mr. One second?
I suppose I could kick it off with, you know, the comment, I think the harm to the neighbor is pretty minimal, but that's not necessarily the legal standard articulated in these points. And so, I think maybe the one I'm stuck on is related to the undue hardship due to the characteristics of the site. And I'm not 100% sure if this meets that standard. It may because of the flooding issue, but I'll pass that off to one of the other commissioners.
Anything else?
Well, I guess that's why I was asking the question, is of location, because I think there are lots of options on the site that are available. So, I agree with you. That is the one that I would question the most in terms of the undue hardship for granting the variance. So, I'm inclined to agree with you. That's my sticking point as well.
Obviously, we could, you know, grant the variance, put in other conditions for additional put in other conditions for additional trees or shrubs, or any kind of a privacy issue like that. But again, I feel there is probably ways to find another location on the site. And they did testify that they were looking to do it within 11 to 25 feet. So, again, I'm not 100% sure about how far the flooding goes. And if there is, I mean, I think if we knew for a fact how far the river would flood, that might be more dispositive for me. But without knowing for sure, I don't know if I could say that there's an undue hardship due to the characteristics of the site.
I don't think we ever know how far a river can flood. That's such a variable. But anyway, so... What's the...
I mean, I would say, if not for the complaints of the neighbors, this would be a lot easier for me. But when you're asking for a variance, you do have to take your neighbors into consideration. And I take the testimony of the neighbors into consideration, even though I don't think it's a very substantial burden to put this in. But, yeah, I'm kind of stuck on the undue hardship point on this one.
Well, you're suggesting that there's not enough of an undue hardship?
I don't know if I've heard enough evidence to come to that conclusion.
Okay.
Well, that's where I am as well. There are other options available, I think, that on the site that don't impact the neighbors.
Would it be?
Even if it's a minimal impact.
Would it then be appropriate for this board to suggest that there be, that the variance be approved with variance, with a condition? We could do that. And if that condition would meet the undue hardship one.
And what kind of a condition would do that?
Move the sheds a little bit, correct? Because, didn't the applicant say they could move them from 10 to 25 feet?
Chairman Commissioner, in the staff report, it was noted that the board obviously has the ability to set the allowed encroachment into that 25-foot setback. So if you wanted to set a number, that would be attached to the project, and the applicant would have to comply.
Okay, well...
So right now, that isn't in the condition of approval?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioner, is there, again, it was a range of 11 to 25 feet. There was a suggestion by staff that if you were going to approve this, you would want to set a number. Sounds like 11 feet would be the preferred allowance by the applicant. But again, you could increase that distance if you felt that was necessary or beneficial to the neighbor.
So if we did that, we would have to table it for revised finding effect?
Well, I think adding just a condition like that wouldn't necessarily require revision to findings unless you thought there was additional reason to allow for the variance that you would like staff to revise the findings. And, yeah, we would definitely want to table that.
Because that's already in the...
Right. Yeah, findings have already been made to support the variance. If you accepted those, you could add the condition. But if you wanted to, you know, further strengthen your reasoning behind giving that certain setback, then we would want to table and revise those findings for you, so.
And if we wanted to give them more options of location, we would just simply deny it?
Exactly, yeah. And so we would revise findings for that as well. We would table and revise findings to reflect your denial, so.
Well, I might be hoping to splitting the difference and saying 20 feet as opposed to 25, or 20 as opposed to 11, or there's a much smaller encroachment into the setback, and see if they could make that work.
Commissioners, I'm trying not to talk to you. But if you were going to do something like that, I'd encourage you to maybe have staff review their findings to support that different setback. You know, some other reason occurring on site that you would want staff to include in those findings to make that okay, if you felt compelled to do that.
So we would need to table it for another point at time?
Yeah, so here's options. You could table it to ask for additional information. It sounds like we had some question about the floodplain, floodway, Boise River Greenway overlay. We could certainly go do that research for you, present that to you, and let you consider that. And at that point, you could either say that's enough or not in terms of granting or denying the request, or granting it with some additional condition regarding like a 20-foot setback. It sounded like Commissioner Davidson was interested in.
Or some other option there, or another option at another place in there?
Right. And so, again, if you feel like you don't have enough information, that's a good opportunity to table so that we can go find that information, you know, research that for you.
That would be my preference, because then we could do the floodplain. We could do that other thing, so.
I would accept the motion.
And so the motion is to table it? How would we make that motion then?
Chairman, you would request staff table it to a date certain. I believe, we probably want to do this at a public hearing, so everyone gets a chance to talk about that again. July 24th is probably the date that we're best suited for. We have a really big item on the 10th of July that we are trying to keep other items off that agenda. So it would be tabling it to July 24th with direction to staff to research whatever it is you want me to research.
Okay. And to clarify for me, that you would research the floodplain, as well as the setback, the 20, anything between 11 and 25 feet? Which would, 25 would meet the code. Anything under that would require a variance?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, correct. Anything inside of 25 feet would require a variance.
Okay. So do you need any more clarification? Or just simply say the motion to table it, pending getting additional information from the staff?
I think that works for me. I don't know if legal wants a more specific reason for tabling, but I think we've got enough on the record to let me know what you want me to look at, so.
Okay. So I make the motion to table application 2024-00582/V Harold Schlatter until July 24th to provide the staff opportunity to give us additional information.
Now, we would have to reopen the hearing then on the 24th, correct?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, I would recommend that, considering you're asking for additional information to be added to the record.
Right. And that would be the only subject of the reopening? Okay. All right. Is the motion clear?
I think I know what you're asking for.
All right. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'll just give probably my standard command to the parties, and nothing we're voting on tonight would preclude the parties in this case from meeting with each other and finding some mutually agreeable solution before we come back and have to make it for them. Because when you're asking the government to make a decision, somebody's probably going to win, and somebody's probably going to lose. So we always do like to encourage neighbors to try, if possible, to reach a mutually agreeable solution to their issues. And if not, I suppose we will be back to make the decision.
Is that a second?
That's a second.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. And we have the motion in front of us as a further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay. We will next have, and take up, and I'll open the public hearing on application 2024-00619A, Sharon Olman. We're going to ask our staff to present a staff report. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners, one moment. Sorry. PowerPoint's been giving me some challenges today, so I apologize. All right. So thank you, Chairman Commissioners. The application before you is an appeal of two zoning certificates associated with the issuance of two building permits for accessory structures on the subject property. The applicant is Sharon Olman. The subject property is located near the city of Boise, in fact, directly adjacent to Boise city limits, and at the end of Zaffrey Ridge Street. Surrounding uses include single-family homes to the north and west, and undeveloped rangeland to the south and east. The site is a 2.77-acre property in the R8 district. It contains an existing single-family home, as well as accessory structures and a riding arena. The current property owner takes access from Columbia Road to the north via an easement that crosses HOA land along the eastern boundary of Painted Ridge subdivision. And so I'll highlight that here. So here is the driveway, which will be discussed a lot during this presentation and tonight. And then here is the Zaffrey Ridge Street that terminates at the property on its western edge. So the applicant has requested to build two accessory structures, one at 1,499 square feet. That is the proposed barn here. And another at 600 square feet, which, it looks like my little red circle disappeared, but it's the proposed run-in shelter down here. Regarding the appeal, the appellant has made five points, as summarized by staff and detailed in the staff report. The first involves noncompliance with Ada County Code Section 8-4A-3, access to and frontage on a roadway. As noted in the staff report, the appellant believes that, based on this code section, making use of that easement to Columbia Road to the north should not be allowed. That's a very broad generalization of what they've said. They'll give you a lot more detail during their testimony. There's a long history here, and that is the second point. The easement has existed prior to the plating of Painted Ridge subdivision and has been used by the property owners of the subject property. There's statements made by the appellant that, based on the development agreement associated with the Painted Ridge subdivision, as well as other documents, the use of that property should go away. There was a letter from our director included in the staff report and exhibits tonight that detail kind of what's going on with that easement and what Ada County's role is. In general, it is not Ada County's role to determine who makes use of an easement or not. It is only Ada County's role to ensure that any property has access and frontage when it is developed. The Zaffrey Ridge Street does qualify the property under that section. But again, it's not Ada County's position to tell a person which access they use. If they happen to have an easement, they're allowed to use that easement. And if there were any differences in opinion there, that would be between the HOA property owner that controls the land associated with the easement and the property owner themselves. Other points made by the appellant is there were requested entitlements, the requested entitlements for the property over the years should have made this easement go away. I think this falls into the same bucket as the last explanation. But again, it's not our role to remove someone's easement if we're not the grantor or grantee. We are outside of the situation as it relates to that easement. There's claims that the use of the easement has been for nonresidential purposes. The only use approved and existing on site right now is a residential use. So any delivery truck, or maintenance person, or landscaper that comes to the site is to serve the residents on the property. And so it's staff's position that no residential uses of the property are occurring, and therefore, no use of that easement is for nonresidential uses. I do know that previous ownership had had some other things occurring on the site, and code enforcement had been out there multiple times to talk to them about trailers being stored on site, potentially riding classes for horses. Again, all of that was a prior owner, and none of that is occurring with this property. If those things were to occur, you know, they would need a planning approval. And again, their argument about that easement could carry more water, but not again with Ada County. It would be the HOA to determine whether or not that easement's being used appropriately in conjunction with the property owner. And then finally, there's claims of trespassing on adjacent properties east of Painted Ridge subdivision. Ada County has received no complaints from those property owners about trespass. And again, if that were to occur, it's outside of our responsibility to resolve that. That's between the property owners and the person driving on their property if they are indeed trespassing. So for those reasons, staff does not support these points for the appeal. In terms of comments we received from different agencies, our building official had no objections. They've issued a permit for those accessory structures, as well as zoning certificates issued by the Planning Division in our department. City of Boise Public Works commented on this one, oddly enough, and they have no issues with the accessory structures. And then I mentioned before, our director wrote a letter to the appellant, Ms. Olman, regarding this issue, because it, you know, had been on our radar for a while. We'd seen some complaints and concerns. And ultimately, it was determined that, again, this is not an issue for us to resolve. This is between the HOA and that property owner. And if the HOA doesn't want them making use of that easement, then they would have to go to the trouble of removing that easement. But again, it's not our position to regulate that easement. And in fact, with the Painted Ridge subdivision development back in the day, a previous commission identified that we're not here to resolve this matter between you two. That's up to all of the people concerned with this, and particularly the HOA who owns the property, again, associated with the easement area. Terms of public comments, we received eight in total. One comment from a resident of the subdivision that supported the appeal and wanted that easement eliminated, and did call into question its use. They cited reasons of safety for the neighborhood, and again, kind of cited with the appellant in regards to why the easement should go away. There were also seven comments received in support of the current use of that easement area and the current property owner. Those included comments from the Painted Ridge subdivision HOA, the former president of the Painted Ridge subdivision HOA, multiple residents of Painted Ridge, the attorney of the subject property owner, and the owner of the property themselves. And all arguing to allow the continued use of that easement by the owner. In terms of project findings, staff finds it to be in compliance with our appeal section, which basically says that this was an effective party and was filed in a timely manner. And that the project also complies, the zoning certificates in particular, comply with our zoning code for zoning certificates and how those can be approved. So in conclusion, staff is recommending, that's incorrect, a denial of the appeal, 2024-00619A. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Yes, just as a clarification. So the, to make sure I understand this. One, Ada County doesn't have any jurisdiction over the easement or the granting or the restrictions on the easement, or revoking of the easement. And it would be the subdivision and the property owner that would have to make that decision.
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, that's correct.
And the easement's granted by whom?
It was granted by the HOA, basically, the Painted Ridge subdivision HOA is the grantor of that easement to this property owner in terms of being allowed to cross that common lot on the eastern side of the property.
And you, you said a previous board, Ada County Commissioner Board, has addressed this issue in the past?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, with the original entitlement of Painted Ridge subdivision, that easement driveway came up. It was something discussed quite a bit. And ultimately, that commission determined that it has no cards to play in terms of the easement itself. That is between the subject property owner and the land that the easement crosses over, which happens to be HOA-controlled land.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
With regards to the, was it eight? Eight people who commented in opposition of the appeal? Are they all connected to the property in question? Or did you say that the HOA itself was one of the submissions?
Yeah, so everyone who commented is from the area, except for the attorney of the property owner. There was one resident who lives in Painted Ridge, who does not want that driveway to be used. That's in addition to the appellant. And then there are multiple residents who live in the subdivision that want the continued use of that driveway and that easement, as well as the Painted Ridge HOA, and the former president of the Painted Ridge HOA. And obviously, the property owners themselves.
So does that mean the HOA took a vote to send this letter? What kind of documentation did you get?
It was an email from the Painted Ridge subdivision HOA. And I personally don't know if they voted on that to... I mean, I would assume they did as an HOA. But again, we don't get involved with HOA proceedings to confirm how they voted. But that was a statement from the Painted Ridge subdivision HOA regarding this matter.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions of our staff before we proceed? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Is the applicant of the, for the, here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sharon Olman. I live at 5991 East Zaffery Ridge Street in, or excuse me, I do not. I live at 5991 East Black Gold Street. Zaffery Ridge is the subject of this issue. First of all, I want to clarify a couple of things. Do you have the aerial photo of the area in 2013? It's one of the exhibits I can-
I could pull that up. I'd have to go into the staff report, but-
Okay, if you could, if you could pull that up, I'd appreciate it. In 2013, there was only one house on 40 acres, and it was the house that's now known to be at 5900 East Zaffery Ridge Street. It made perfect sense to have an access easement. You absolutely had to do that while this development project was taking place because that owner needed to be able to get to their property. There were actually a couple of easements. Once Amber Ridge Avenue went in on the far west side of the subdivision, the other one terminated. Why there wasn't a provision specifically written into this one to terminate, I suspect it's because that back portion of the subdivision was not being contemplated at that time.
I'm working through your details.
Okay.
I'll try to find it here in just a second. Is this, are we getting close?
You're getting close.
Yeah, I'm sorry, let's see here.
In any event, it's, it's a big piece of farmland. There was one house on it, quite a distance from Columbia Road. The access easement was absolutely mandatory. The developer granted that easement to the owners of that property. They later teamed up and developed more of that, that 10 acres. That's what left the remaining 2.77 acres that we're talking about today.
I think I may have found it here. Is this the property?
That looks like the one. So as you can see, there weren't any roads, and access easement was absolutely necessary. Gentlemen, John Adams said, "We have a government of laws, not of men." If that's true, shouldn't those laws be followed and enforced? Multiple times now, owners of the property containing the piece now known as 5900 East Zaffery Ridge Street have signed on to conditions of approval and a development agreement that say they agree to comply with the Ada County zoning ordinance, Title A, Chapter 4, Article A. Title 8, Chapter 4, Article A. The conditions of approval from 2013 for the Painted Ridge subdivision, the initial part, specify that the property must be managed and maintained, consistent with the standard regulations in Title 8, Chapter 4, Article A of the Ada County Code. That includes 8-4A-3, access to and frontage on a roadway. Access shall be taken from the required frontage unless the property also has frontage on an alley or an approved private road. The county development services, services staff appears to agree the required frontage for the property at 5900 East Zaffery Ridge is on Zaffery Ridge Street, and that the 10-foot-wide access easement on the east side of the Painted Ridge subdivision does not meet the legal requirements to be an alley or an approved private road. The staff then claims the easternmost strip of the subdivision provides the owners of that property secondary access. I can find no reference to secondary access in the Ada County zoning ordinance. In addition, the owners of the property are using the strip as their primary access route to their property. The staff report goes on to convey that the county's mandatory legal requirement is subject to the whims of the Homeowners Association and the board. I disagree. It's board, the HOA board. Since when do HOA boards have greater authority than our duly-elected Board of Ada County Commissioners? Zoning certificates in the Ada County zoning ordinance 8-7-1, Part C, the zoning certificate shall be invalid upon violation of any regulations of this title on the subject property. Daily, on a daily basis, Title 8, the Ada County zoning ordinance, is being violated by the owners of 5900 East Zaffery Ridge Street when they access their property from anywhere other than the required frontage. Therefore, the staff's proposed findings are frankly nonsensical when they state the board finds that no specific action is required to satisfy this condition because it is required as a term of approval for the zoning certificates and the building permits. In 8-7A-8 of the county's zoning ordinance, it states that the board may require conditions of approval that it deems necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and/or to prevent undue adverse impacts on surrounding properties. In other words, there is a good reason for the county's conditions of approval. If not, or if the county does not intend to enforce them, why have them at all? In your last hearing a few minutes ago, you were talking about undue hardship. It does not appear that there is any undue hardship caused to the owners of 5900 East Zaffery Ridge Street to be required to use the actual paved ACHD public roads. It's not a longer trip. It goes literally directly right to the edge of their property. It's not further from their house. In fact, it might be slightly closer. The Local Land Use Planning Act in Idaho Code provides for development agreements. 67-6511A Development Agreements reads, "Each governing board may, by ordinance adopted or amended in accordance with the notice and hearing provisions provided under Section 67-6509 of Idaho Code, require or permit as a condition of rezoning that an owner or developer make a written commitment concerning the use or development of the subject parcel." It goes on to say, "Unless modified or terminated by the governing board after a public hearing, a commitment is binding on the owner of the parcel, each subsequent owner, and each other person acquiring an interest in the parcel. The agreements in place regarding the Painted Ridge subdivision are binding on all of us who own property within that subdivision in order to protect public health and safety and prevent undue adverse impacts on surrounding properties." We are here this evening to ask the county to please enforce those agreements made between the various owners of the property, their successors, and Ada County itself, and require the owners of 5900 East Zaffery Ridge Street to access their property from Zaffery Ridge Street rather than along the entire east side of the Painted Ridge subdivision, which I calculated to be about 1,300 feet long of a 10-foot-wide dirt strip. James Madison said, "In republics, the great danger is that the majority may not sufficiently respect the rights of the minority." I understand there are 17 of us homeowners along that east side of Painted Ridge. We are a minority of members of the Painted Ridge subdivision. We are about a tenth of the people who reside there. However, the adverse impacts on us from the behavior of one property owner are extensive. Although those of us adversely impacted by the ongoing traffic along the former access easement might be a minority, we should be able to have the expectation that our elected officials will respect our rights, including our private property rights. If the county does not intend to honor and enforce the agreements into which it enters, why have those agreements in the first place? Thank you, gentlemen.
Are there any questions? Any questions?
Well, I guess maybe for the sake of the lawyers, probably as a preliminary matter, bring up the fact that all three of us are very well acquainted with you, and so I'm wondering about, you know, recusal or bias or anything like that, if, you know, what you feel on it, and we should probably have to make a statement.
I've known all of you for a very long time. I am not an attorney, so I, I don't know what is required of the board other than acknowledge that is the case.
I just want to take that issue off the table in case, you know, this does go to court, but I think for the record, I need, obviously, I should say I'm very familiar with the, with the appellant.
Well, Commissioner Davidson, what this board has done in the past is, because it's frequently, we know a person testifying in front of us, and what we have done in the past is acknowledge the fact and then state that we can make an unbiased decision notwithstanding the fact that there's a person. That's what, and I think that's safe to say.
I think I can state that for the record, then.
All right.
And if needed, I'll state that for the record as well.
Okay, well, we've got that cleared up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
So how do you respond to the HOA who feels that?
The, the HOA has stated that they prefer to have the traffic on the dirt path rather than on the 30-foot-wide paved public street. There are some people who live along that street who don't want the added traffic from what is going on as development at, at 5900 East Zaffery Ridge. If it's too much traffic for a real road, it's definitely too much traffic for a 1,300-foot-long, 10-foot-wide dirt strip that starts less than five feet from my primary bedroom.
And did they have a board that voted on their position?
They, we have a board. The Homeowners Association meeting, I would say probably half or more of the people who were voting on anything were represented by proxy and didn't consider anything, but this issue was not brought to a vote of the entire Homeowners Association. I and some of my neighbors have been trying to work with the board, through the board, against the board, get help from the board to deal with this issue for several years now, and again, with absolutely no results. And so that's why I'm here today before the board with the, the real authority and asking, again, that you protect us even if we're a minority and others in the subdivision don't want the traffic on the actual real paved public road. But all of those agreements that were signed through the years, including by multiple former owners and the current owner agreed when he applied for the zoning certificates and building permits to comply with the Ada County Code. Do the words in that code, in the zoning ordinance, mean what they say? They don't say, "Maybe it's okay if you want to go somewhere else." It says, "You shall use that frontage." Shall is mandatory. It doesn't say you can use something else. To me, it's painfully clear.
Any other questions?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sharon, and you will be able to make a rebuttal if you choose.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of people. I have down here Troy Ashworth as indicated an applicant. Are you a co-applicant, or?
I'm right, I'm wrong.
So Chairman, Commissioner, he is the applicant for the zoning certificates.
Oh, okay.
And so we've historically given the same amount of time-
Sure, sure.
-as the appellant to address the-
Go ahead, sorry.
All right. My name's Troy Ashworth at 5666 East Felly Rim Court, Boise. So, let's see. We purchased this property a couple of weeks ago. I was born and raised southeast Boise. We live in southeast Boise. We saw this ranch come on the, on the market, just under three acres. Not a lot of land in southeast Boise available. And so with this property, we bought it. We have kids that are four, seven, and nine, and we're just looking to have a safe place for us to be able to have horses and enjoy the property. The quote-unquote "development" that's been occurring is just simply renovating the old ranch and improving the property. There's no actual development that's going on. So the property, that driveway's been there for 52 years. Sharon purchased her property in the community two and a half years ago, knowing the existence of the driveway. When I was looking to purchase a property, I looked to make sure there were legal easements, and there's recorded legal easements for the driveway back in 2013. And that easement was not granted by the HOA. It was not granted by the developer. It was granted over 40 years ago. So in 2013, when Painted Ridge was first started, then they modified the easement. They clarified it. Again, it's a recorded easement, nice and clear. And in the plat, they have the easement for the first 500 feet or so of the driveway with ACHD approval and sign-off. The second phase of Painted Ridge, they did another plat for another 750 feet or so. I do agree with Sharon that the driveway's probably 1,200, 1,300 feet, something like that. Now, this driveway, it's kind of hard to see, but you could see where the driveway comes in. The, outside of there being a written express easement, the purpose of it, the access is, it's what leads to the front door. It's what Amazon uses, what the post, what UPS is going to use. The prior owner actually had to call emergency services, and an ambulance had to come in, and they came in that direction. So the driveway is the access to the front of the house. You could kind of see where the driveway comes up in the circular drive. It's the access to the shop. It's also over, I don't know if we can see it, but there's a little white thing right there, down and over to your right. Yeah, oh, no, your-
My left.
Yeah. Right there is where the new hay barn is going. So it's also where we're going to be able to bring in the hay and deliver the hay into the hay barn. So everything we've done to the property, which has been removing over 120 yards worth of trash from the property, by tomorrow, we'll finish removing over 100 yards of wood chips that have been just thrown around the property. Plus, we burned a whole bunch of twigs. We've just been cleaning the property up. So it's been two months' worth of traffic that has been a home remodel and cleaning up of a 52-year-old ranch home that had just been kind of let go. So most of the neighbors are pretty happy with us. We got rid of an old barn. We got a permit for it. We went through all of the right process. I'd like to say Leon and his staff have been amazing. I was shocked at how great they've been to work with. So we got the zoning certificates, we got the permits. All we're doing is building the horse run, it's a shelter for horses on one side. The other side is for hay storage, and then a barn for horses. It's pretty, pretty simple, and the barn is pretty much in the exact same location as the dilapidated, unsafe, falling-down barn that was there before. Yeah, I know I have to let Wyatt have more time, but-
Do you have anything else to say?
Um, let's see. I wrote a whole long thing to say, but ultimately, I think the appeal is on the barns, but I don't really think the appeal has anything to do with the barns. I think the appeal is just that Sharon doesn't like the driveway, that she bought her home right next to, very well-knowing. The CCNRs also mentioned that driveway easement, that's how they refer to it, the access easement, it's right out there, and anyone buying a property or buying it, subject to the CCNRs, it's written right into there that this is the access for this home. There is Zaffery Ridge going into the back of the property, but going into the back of the property really doesn't make realistic sense if an ambulance is coming and they're trying to wheel through horses and horse gates and horse manure and weeds, and they're going to actually take the driveway right to the front door. So we're just looking to have the barn and be able to have somewhere safe for our horses, and all we're doing is making it a really nice property. So thank you for your time.
Well, maybe the board might-
Oh, sorry, questions?
Maybe the board might like to ask you a question or two. Is there any questions for the, for the applicant of the original application?
So I want to just clarify that there's no commercial aspect to this. You're not planning to run a business or a horse-riding business or anything like that?
No, it's a five-stall barn. We have two horses. So, nope, the commercial activity is just contractors coming to do the remodel. We pretty much replaced everything in this little 1,500-square-foot ranch home. So it's been pretty busy, but it's just normal home remodel. There's no commercial activity.
How much traffic are you expecting on a day-to-day basis down that road?
It's just a single-family home. There'll be much less than there is now. I mean, all there is on there is a barn. It's just for horses and barn and a three-bedroom home.
Okay, any other questions?
Just to amplify what Commissioner Davidson just said, or asked, so the traffic, the traffic that's currently going down is for- traffic that's currently going down is for the construction, et cetera, the remodeling, all the cleanup of the, but after that is all done, it'll be a singly-family home? That'll just be normal traffic for a singly-family home?
Correct. Yep. That and anything accompanying the horses, but, yep.
Okay, well, we'll have a question there. I see where the driveway is, back to where the circular driveway is.
Yep.
How do you access that point? Is there a road right there? I don't see a road there.
Are we talking upright by the house?
We're talking up in the northeast corner.
Yeah.
Can't see that that angle very well.
Coming in right at the, from the very top.
Yeah, down. Corner, right there, yeah.
That's where the driveway comes in.
But what, how do you access that driveway? Is there a road there or do you access it? That's my question.
Going to the north?
Other than the house, other than the house.
It just comes in off of Columbia Road, and then the driveway runs down off of Columbia Road, right into the, that driveway.
Oh, so the driveway is from Columbia Road, clear to the corner there?
Correct.
And is that just a, is, the applicant, Ms. Ullman said that's like a little 10-foot-wide path, is that what it is?
Give or take. Part of the agreement with the easement was that the developer would improve it when they did the subdivision, so the developer had it brought up to a basic road standard of just a dirt road, but that was done by the developer back in 2013.
Oh, I see, so it comes off of Columbia Road and then it goes down, and that is the easement in question then, right?
Correct.
Not the driveway portion, but the easement from Columbia Road down to your driveway, right?
Correct.
Right. Now, is there any, do you often or ever use Zaffler Ridge Street to access your property?
We can, and my wife will some. Right over where you can see the arena and then the gray shed, so right there where the barn is, then yeah, she might be able to come and park off of Zaffler to go just directly to the barn. So there is access to be able to reach the barn, but never if we're going to the house or if we're going to the shop on the southeast corner. It would only be if we were only going to access the barn and that was it. Then it would be convenient.
And it's probably convenient if you're to put hay or something in the barn, you might.
Except the hay, the hay storage is right here. So we'll come into here to unload the hay.
Okay. All right, well, I don't have any more questions. Does anybody, does the commissioner have any questions? Okay.
And if I can, I'd like to have my attorney Wyatt.
Sure, sure, go ahead. You got a few more minutes, I guess.
All right. All right, Johnson, 199 North Capitol Boulevard, Boise.
You say Wyatt Johnson?
Wyatt Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you much. I wrote up a letter and I submitted it, and it's part of the record here, and I, well, I was called because there might be problems with this one. So I went ahead and I did my own analysis of the code, and I looked at it and I wrote it up and I sent it in, and I did my analysis and sent in my letter at the same time the staff was doing their analysis and they did their work. We didn't coordinate, we didn't talk, I didn't know where the staff was going to come, and when I read the staff report, I noted that we came to exactly the same conclusion. The way that I read the code is this issue of access, the code ensures a minimum available access to any new developed properties, which exists. You don't want properties landlocked and you don't want them stuck with some sort of oddball access. It just happens that this property also has a driveway easement that's been there for 40 years. It's this driveway easement was there before any of the subdivision was there. The driveway easement was there for the first phase, the driveway was there for the second phase, and the driveway was there in the third phase, which is here. The driveway was there when Ms. Ullman brought her property, and you'll note that this appeal has nothing to do with the subject matter of the application, the building permit. There's no problem with the structures. They're not violating setbacks, they're not raising any issues with the code. This appeal is about complaining about structures to try and get the county to take away a property right, which is an existing easement. I think it's an inappropriate use of the code. I think it's asking the county to stick its neck out and put itself out there and put itself at risk getting into a problem that it has no business being in for the benefit of a private party who would be basically not putting anything at risk. If she's got a problem with the easement, that's a private issue. It's not something to come and ask the county to torture its code or to take away a property right. So I think the staff's conclusion's absolutely right, and I think that you should follow the staff's recommendation.
In your analysis of this issue, who granted the easement?
The easement was granted by the, this easement was initially granted by the underlying property owner before the properties were developed. And then it went through, and this easement was recognized in the first phase, it was recognized in the second phase, and then finally, when they did the third phase and added the street easement, that old easement used to be 30 feet wide. And when they granted the 30-foot street easement, the access, they narrowed it to 10 feet because they just needed to use it as a driveway to the extent that they were going to continue to use it. But the issue is in the code, and where Ms. Ullman says, there's no reference to secondary access in the code, there's not, because to the extent that the code talks about private roads and those regulations, it's got the qualifier, it only matters if there's not the regular required frontage access, which Zaffler Ridge is. So it's got the frontage, so the code no longer cares about the size or length or anything else of that private easement. That just becomes a matter of the private public or their private concern. The code's satisfied its concern to make sure that this property has sufficient access, which it does.
Okay, so if the original owner granted the easement, who would be the owner of the easement now?
The owner of the easement, the beneficial right of the easement, Mr. Ashworth owns the beneficial right of that easement. The easement overlays homeowners' association common property, and in fact, the way that the covenants deal with that is the covenants go through and recognize that driveway easement, but they don't put any restrictions on it. The covenants recognize the driveway easement to say, "We're not going to use homeowner funds to maintain it." They're going to leave that on Mr. Ashworth's to do, is they carve it out, they recognize that it's there, but they also carve it out so that the homeowners' association doesn't need to maintain it or do anything.
So that's the easement over all those properties along that line then?
Well, no, those properties, that easement's outside of those homeowners' property lines. Those homeowners' property lines go up and they end.
So who owns that dirt then?
The homeowners' association, the homeowners' association has it as a common lot.
Oh, so it would be only the homeowners' association could do anything with, because they own the property?
The homeowners' association owns it. So I mean, really, what we're talking about here is we're talking about Ms. Ullman's trying to enforce a, essentially, it's a nuisance claim from the use of a private easement. That's what she's really wanting to do, and if she wants to do that, this isn't the arena to do that.
Okay, any other, any questions too?
So, I mean, would you say that she's largely legally correct on her claims, but this is not the appropriate venue to adjudicate those because of what you previously stated?
Actually, I think she's dead on her, I think she's dead on her legal claims anyways, which is why she's here, is because she's trying to end run a case that she's not going to succeed with in court.
Is that because?
I'm sorry, I just didn't hear that, your last one.
All right, it's, this is, Mr. Ashworth has a legitimate easement right that is not across Ms. Ullman's property, and it existed before she was there. She came to it, she came to it, she knew it was there. There's not going to be anything that she's probably likely to be able to do in court, but if she were able to, it would be to go to the courts. So she's coming to this body, asking this body to take away Mr. Ashworth's property right because she apparently can't do it any other way.
So what about the previous development agreements that say that the road has to comply with Ada County Code?
They don't. The previous development agreements say that the developers shall all comply with Ada County Code, and they do not specify the driveway easement at all. If the prior development agreements would have asked for some conditions, say the abandonment of that easement, they would have specified the abandonment of the easement. They make a general reference that is in all applications that says, "Velper shall otherwise comply with Ada County Code," and there's nothing in Ada County Code that says that he has to abandon a private driveway easement if he's got, or that that private driveway easement has to comply with any standards if the lot has full access, and the lot does have full access.
There's no standards it has to comply with as far as being paved or anything like that?
No, no, that only applies in the case where it's the exclusive access. In the exclusive access, the county's interested in making sure to protect minimal access to the lot, so you're not getting landlocked parcels and things like that. If the property's got access, county doesn't care about what the other private easements are.
And so what do you think a citizen's remedy to address this kind of situation would be?
Well, it's, you should look at the title report when you buy the property. She won, and she bought this property next to an easement. She bought it, it was there. Conduct your due diligence, that's a citizen's remedy. You can't come to, you can't come into a property, know about an easement running next door, buy it, and then want the property owner next door to change their rights after the fact. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, we have Martin Sheffer. Did I pronounce that right?
Pretty close.
Pretty close, okay.
Actually, I'm celebrating my 60th year as a permanent resident here in Boise.
Congratulations.
And I haven't stepped foot inside the county courthouse yet, but this is the first time, I guess that's a good thing, right?
Yes. Most people hear that.
After all, yes.
Yep.
All right, much of what I had to say has already been covered, so I'd like to just make a few comments. I and my wife live right across essentially the street from Sharon and her husband on that corner and, of course, up against the fence along which the easement runs.
Can staff pull that up? You got a picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
The, yeah, this easement that runs along the side of the fence that goes from Columbia down to the, well, the property that's in contention here with regard to using that easement. I just wanted to point out that I've been there since the, that part of the subdivision was developed, it's been about nine years. It's been fairly quiet during almost all but the last three years of that time, in which the previous owner to the property in question there was renting out space for some very large cherry picker kinds of machines that were doing tree removal and had to get up into the higher levels to cut that down. And so these things were running back and forth. They were also, as it was mentioned, storing trailers back in there, and there was a lot of heavy traffic moving through, and that was becoming quite an issue. Since that time, and in recent times, since the most recent resident, there's been a lot of traffic, as has been mentioned, coming through there. This has created, over the winter time, some pretty large chuck holes that have been improperly filled with round gravel that just pops out, doesn't stay put. I've had dirty, muddy water slap, curb over the top of my fence into my property from these mud holes. There, most of the people are being very careful about moving through there at a reasonable speed, but there are those who don't pay attention to that, drive their pickup through there. These are usually people working on the property, not the owner, but moving very fast. I've had to come in there twice to ask them nicely if they would stop driving so fast through there, sometimes 30, maybe as much as 40 miles an hour. And that, and my wife has also contracted a lung ailment. We had to sell property last year and move back to Boise on a full-time basis because of the dust, and here we sit there. This gets really dusty in the summertime because it is, it's dirt. There's been gravel in there, it's been, you know, packed down over the years, but it's also been pulverized and a lot of very fine dust. We can't open our back door to the, to our backyard because the dust coming in through the, through there in the morning is obvious, we're having to dust constantly. I think the, I think that easement was intended to get people to that property. At the time, there was no other way to do that. Now that there is a paved road put in there, even though it doesn't quite line up with the circular drive, I don't think that's enough of a reason to continue using this easement. I can see where it could be, down at the end there, something like, do not, this is for emergency vehicles only, fire department ought to be able to get in there. There was a fire about a year ago that they were bringing fire trucks in through there and then into the, into the sagebrush between that and the adjacent subdivision. I can see ambulances coming in, as was mentioned, but I just can't understand why 17 people have to put up with all this dust that's coming into their backyards. We're right up against that fence. I'm not quite as close to the fence as Sharon, but I'm about 15 feet from the fence, and they come right next to that as they go through. That just seems to me to be a very odd way to, you know.
I'll ask you a question since your time's up, but.
Okay, time's up, right.
What, have you taken any steps to address this with the HOA or anyone?
I have, I have talked, yes, I have talked to the HOA president on several occasions. I have talked to some of the homeowners and renters along the, of the 17 through there, and I've, I could say that there, nobody is happy with what's going on. Some are, you know, more at ease with this, not going to be putting up a fuss, others are quite upset about it. And I think what we're doing also is creating a problem because we now have people along the 17 houses that want this removed or stop using this like it is, and we have another group on Zaffler Ridge who see this as a bit of a cul-de-sac and don't want any more traffic coming in. So we, we're seeing a split in the homeowners' association between one side of the subdivision and the other.
So did the HOA vote and take their side and not your side?
In the, the last HOA meeting was, we had a lot of problems getting even a quorum, and so we had a very small number of people, and a lot of that was by proxy. The, there was a large number of people from Zaffler Ridge there who voted not to put a board member in who was interested in getting this resolved as regards to the dirt path, and we never took a vote directly on what to do about this. It was just a question of getting an additional board member that was known to be in favor of the, of some removal.
So you're just spinning your wheels at this point?
We're spinning our wheels.
You don't have any resolution so far?
No, I don't have a resolution. I'd just like to be here to say, I'd like to see this get resolved. I've been watching this develop, it's not getting any better. I'd like to see it get resolved.
All right, thank you.
Did you have any questions? Okay. Well, I don't have anybody else on the, on the list for, to testify, is there? Oh, you want to testify?
May I?
Sure. Just state your name and your address, and you got three minutes. Thank you.
I'm Matthew Saban, I am at, John, it's hard to think when you stand here, isn't it? 8133 South Red Cliff Avenue in Painted Ridge. I am the current board president and the one who sent the email to you. Your text shows me as former somehow, so that needs to be corrected.
My apologies.
HOA Board is aware of the problem. Sharon brought to our attention that, in fact, in 2013, agreement was signed between the developer of our, of the Painted Ridge Development and the adjacent horse property. They actually agreed to continue to use the easement until such time as an actual road was provided, and then the easement would evaporate. Since then, the very same developer recodified the easement without mentioning that it was going to go away in every single other document he ever filed. So there's some legal question as to whether there is or isn't an easement at this time. The board would like to address that and was trying to speak with the former occupant of that property. And then the efforts being taken by Ms. Ullman specifically to resolve the problem adversarially caused those communications to break down. That neighbor ceased to communicate with us and did what she could to try to make her life work, and eventually threw up her hands and moved. The current occupant, I think, would be happy to speak with me as well, but because of this situation before you was, I think, not interested in having a meeting with the board outside of his lawyer's conversations until such time as the decision was made here. The HOA would like to come to an agreement with the occupant of the horse property behind us and amicably resolve the use and issues. We haven't been allowed to because we keep having to fight the adversarial nature of Ms. Ullman's process. And so I'm asking you to deny this and allow the process of neighborly communication to occur.
So you're asking us to deny Ms. Ullman's application?
I have.
To deny the application?
I don't see, I don't see value in causing him to stop working on his barn to resolve an unrelated issue of the driveway.
Well, it does seem to me like there could be a resolution because the property is private property. The private property is owned by the homeowners' association, correct? Could not the homeowners' association sell that property?
We could conceivably sell it, we could also enter into a new easement.
Yeah.
All kinds of things could happen. I haven't had the chance to have those conversations because each time I've tried, it's become difficult.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
I'll ask, do you feel the HOA has the authority to pave the road or put traffic signs up or do anything with the road as it stands now?
Our CCNRs are written not to give us that. It explicitly say that it's not common area is an easement for driveway purposes. And these, our CCNRs are written to kind of preclude us from doing things with that property. I don't think that that's the same as denying us the possibility of doing it. I just don't know what the right legal approach is to do that around the writing of the CCNRs at this time. My plan was to agree with the owner to have someone put them up and someone pay for them. And I don't see why that couldn't be the board and the homeowner in some sort of conjunction.
So you may have the authority to service the road, but legally you may not?
The question might be, if we're spending HOA funds to do it, we may have to first get a vote to modify the CCNRs to allow us to do that. So I don't know that our CCNRs currently allow us to spend homeowners' money on the development or maintenance of the easement at this time.
Well, CCNRs can always be changed.
Yeah, well, yeah, all you have to do is get three quarters of the population to come to a meeting. You tell me how you get 180 people.
Well, under that set of facts, at present, I mean, who's responsible for maintenance of the road?
That is left conspicuously unclear in our documents. So I went to the former occupant and asked her to do it. She said she would be happy to if only we would supply the money to cover the equipment or to cover the supplies. And then she stopped talking to me because she was angry about our inability to keep Sharon from bothering her.
Okay. Okay, any more questions? Go ahead.
Just, just clarification. You live on the street, correct? South Red Cliff Road, which.
I live on Red Cliff, I'm across the street from Marty. So I'm three doors from the horse property.
Okay.
And two doors from the easement.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Then Sharon, you have some rebuttal time, how much rebuttal time?
I'll try to make it brief.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The prior owner, as you heard, had numerous illegal activities going on on that property which were causing even worse problems than just having an easement there, as Marty mentioned, all the large trucks. I believe it was Micron was out doing some surveying in the past week or so. And I used their point and took a picture with my Ring camera. And I am holding a stake at the edge of the easement. You can see 10 feet is not very wide. In addition, the issues, so the homeowners' association, again, has stated specifically, they want the traffic on the easement. They don't want the traffic on Zaffer Ridge because there are children who play there. There are also children on the easement. Take a look at the first picture and take a look at the second picture. And when those two things happen at the same time, what happens to those darling children? When that truck comes around the corner and they're on their little tiny bicycles down on the ground? I don't want to see what happens in that situation. In addition, hearing that this is residential traffic, if you look at the additional pictures, you can see we had a dump truck with a dumpster on the back. It couldn't figure out how to get around the corner. So they backed the dumpster off and set it down beside our house, pulled up, eventually came back, collected the dumpster, all the while beep, 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 beep. And it took, you know, 10, 15 minutes for this process to take place. So the, and the last couple of photos, the trucks with trailers. There was a dump truck back there, but you know what? Ada County actually, Ada County's contractor collects the trash for this house from Zaffer Ridge Street because that's the actual frontage. We heard that an ambulance came down there, but ACHD required that property when that last split, that subdivision of that 10 acres, left the 2.77 acres and then that last Phase 6 of Painted Ridge. That property was renumbered. It used to have a Columbia Road address. It's now 5,900 East Zaffer Ridge. Paramedics are going to be terribly confused. They're going to come on Zaffer Ridge, I believe, to try to get to that house. If these folks build horse fences and don't allow people to get to their house from Zaffer Ridge, that's another disaster waiting to happen. So once again, I would ask this board to please enforce what it actually says in your law, the Ada County zoning ordinance. It's very specific, it's very clear. And you have the right to do that because multiple owners of this property, when it was larger and now when it's smaller, have signed that they agree to comply with the Ada County zoning ordinance. And that Ada County zoning ordinance says access shall be taken from the required frontage unless the property also has frontage on an alley or an approved private road, which it does not. Thank you.
Is there any questions to? You have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no more testimony. We've had the rebuttals. You have some documents that you might need to submit for the record.
Yeah, Chairman, Commissioner, now those are the record. They might already be a part of the original record, but we'll take them and confirm.
Well, you can like check and see if they are. If they're not, we'll make sure that they are submitted. Do you need any other documents for the record?
Sorry about that, Commissioners.
Do we need any other documents to be added to the record before I close the public hearing?
Chairman, all, all records or all exhibits will be a part of the record that we're showing here tonight. And I believe we already do have these, but I will double check for you.
Okay, good enough.
They're new.
And they're new exhibits to the records.
Oh, they're new, okay. All right. All right. Then I will close the public hearing on application 2024-00619-A. Public hearing being closed, it's the pleasure of the board. What, what say you? Any discussion?
I guess I can, I can kick it off.
Okay.
I guess I, the issues raised regarding the easement and the validity of the easement and the use of the easement, I, I think are valid concerns. But I don't think they're in the purview of, one, of the appeal because we're appealing two certificates for, for building permits and not the easement. So we're not even, we're not even, that's not being appealed. First of all, secondly, we don't have the authority to change the easement even if we wanted to. So I think we have to stay focused on the appeal itself, the issues themselves, which are the two zoning certificates. That's where we, that is the issue in front of us, whether we grant the appeal regarding the certificates or not.
Okay, that's, that's the way I read it as well. The appeal, in fact, it says right on here, the appeal of the director's approval of two zoning certificates. And.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, and there's, there, what has come to light is there's, there's a longstanding dispute on, on A, interpretation of our zoning code. And we have multiple interpretations of that. We have a couple of lawyers that came to the same conclusion, apparently, that, anyway. Are there, is there any other discussion on, on any other? Go ahead.
Well, I think from the evidence we've heard tonight, there's no question that the road is something of a nuisance to the neighborhood with the dust and the speed and sort of the safety issues, overall health and safety to the neighborhood. I think that's pretty clear. But again, to me, the question is, can you use an appeal of the zoning certificates on this one particular project to sort of attack the legality of the previous, you know, conditions of approval? I don't know if I've seen that direct link. We've heard a lot of testimony that says you can't make that connection. I, again, I haven't seen any court decisions or any, anything like that that would allow us to use this particular process to address that particular issue, even though I would say it is a nuisance to the neighborhood. And, I mean, it's, from what we've heard, it's kind of in a, in a bit of a limbo with who owns it and whether or not the owners can actually do anything about it. So I think if the HOA can find a way to resolve it, they'll be heroes to the neighborhood and heroes to us if we, if we don't have to deal with it anymore. But legally, I'm not sure we can deny one person's zoning certificates to attack the problems with the easement.
Okay.
Just, just to amplify, yes, I agree. This is, this is an issue for the courts or somebody else, not us. Even though the issues raised, as Commissioner Davidson said, are real and probably need to be addressed.
There's no doubt there's, there's some, some real issues there, and they seem to be legal issues, but I don't see how they're legal issues relating to our zoning code and to the building, building permit. I mean, I'm still confused as to who actually owns the property. And therefore, we understand that, that the applicant, not, not the applicant, the appellant applicant, but the actual applicant has the rights of beneficial use. But who actually owns it? I mean, what, what could actually be done by somebody? And we're not in a position to, to make those kind of decisions because that's not what's in front of us. So I.
We'll say it from listening to the testimony, the HOA president. Sounds like there's a possibility that the HOA may be able to resolve this. I didn't know if the HOA had completely absolved themselves of all responsibility for this or denied ownership or what. But having the HOA here to explain their position, to me, was helpful. And again, them saying that there may be some way to resolve this through the HOA, I think could possibly give the appellant some relief in the future.
Okay, having said all that, is there a motion?
I move to deny the appeal number 2024-00619-A. Sharon Ullman, appeal of two zoning certificates,
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there further discussion?
I'll just say again, we have had staff take more than one look at this. We've had legal go over it. And, you know, we're not coming into this without being briefed on, on the law here. We have taken a good look at it. And again, for me, I just couldn't see the connection between what the appellant is asking for in this particular process.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think, like you suggested, there, there, with the head of the homeowners' association agreeing that, that there could be a process forward, I would sure encourage the parties to, to do that.
And I would amplify that as well. I would seriously recommend that the parties get together and resolve this because there, there really are some issues here that need to be resolved.
Okay. Having heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. It's not even 9 o'clock yet. Okay. We next have, I'll open the public hearing on application 202102022CUMSPR. 3100 Sellers, and we'll ask Leon to give us a report.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. The item before you is a one-year review of the board's ultimate approval of a conditional use of master site plan for a winery and event center. You overturned an appeal trying to request that CUMSP be denied, which was granted by the P&amp;Z, and you upheld the P&amp;Z's decision. The applicant is 3100 Sellers. The subject property is located near the city of Eagle, north of Homer Road. Surrounding uses include rural residences, rangeland, and other agricultural uses. It's a 10.19 acre property in the RR District. There's an existing office, storage, and production facility for the winery and event center on site, as well as vineyard areas as well. The history of the project, as mentioned before, the board denied the appeal of the conditional use of master site plan, specifically denied the appeal of the approval of the conditional use of master site plan for the winery and event center, ultimately upholding the P&amp;Z's approval. Through that process, you did add a condition that a review after one year from the commencement of the use be performed by this body. So in terms of how we landed on this date, the certificate of occupancy was granted for the conversion of the existing home and garage on site to an office, storage, and production facility for the winery in March of last year. And then in June. facility for the winery in March of last year. And then in June of last year, you granted the alcohol license issued for thirty-one hundred sellers. So June 12th felt like a pretty good in the middle date to bring this before you. To date, this has been, this is what has been completed for the project. This is that structure building that I mentioned that was converted. So this is now the office, production facility, and storage facility for the winery. There are other buildings proposed for the project in the future, and those have yet to be constructed, largely because the applicant has waited to see how this one-year review would go. It should also be noted, I tried to make it very clear with bold, or at least a capital font, that this is only a review. We're not changing conditions here today. If you hear something that's alarming and you think the conditional use should be revoked, then we'd have to engage in a separate process to do that. So we're really just reviewing this application. You are taking testimony. But based on feedback you hear from the applicant today, they may be interested in exploring a modification to their entitlement to make use of the property in a different way. Again, that's fully a subject, a different public hearing process that all those requests would be subject to moving forward. In terms of comments from the agency, or agency comments, my apologies, our Ada County Building Official stated they have no objection with the current project. Central Health has stated that if restroom or plumbing facilities are being installed, then a new sewage system must be installed to meet Idaho's sewage regulations. They're also in discussions with the applicant about the production facility and the septic that's there and making sure all of that works properly, but that's a process outside of us. And the Ada County Highway District mentioned that this is impact fee eligible, and I believe those impact fees were collected for the initial redevelopment of that building, and any new building would be subject to impact fees as well. We did receive one comment from the public in opposition to the project. The things that they identified in their letter were suspected misuse of the property in May of 2023 prior to issuance of an alcohol license. I think that's better addressed by the applicant, but staff was made aware of that. It was identified as a private party for the property owners and not a business-related function. There's light pollution continuing to be an issue. After we approved a light screening plan for the large doors, particularly on the storage facility, they've, they've mentioned that they are still having issues with that. There were some decorations for events held on the property that they raised concern with. There was some signage installed for the winery. That signage does meet our code and complies with ACHD's requirements as well. I think initially it had been constructed maybe in the right-of-way accidentally, and they relocated it outside of the right-of-way. There's a bird laser that's used for the vineyard that seems to negatively impact the neighbors across the street. The bird laser came up during testimony about the conditional use in master site plan and during the appeal. You know, the vineyard is in agricultural use. That's a function of the agricultural use, and so not really subject to the conditional use process. But again, something probably better addressed by the applicant or the member of the public who commented on the project. Negative impacts to views from the neighbor's property caused by the winery operation, and then finally, traffic on Homer Road and cars parking in front of the winery. And those are subject to ACHD's review. There's no prohibition for parking on Homer Road, and we've heard no complaints from Ada County Sheriff or ACHD regarding traffic on Homer Road. So in conclusion, staff believes this one-year review has been completed and that the project remains in compliance with the conditions of approval that you placed on the project, and we recommend that the use be allowed to continue under those conditions of approval. And I'll stand for any questions.
Was this not just a staff, not a staff recommendation, but a staff review?
Yes. So this was a staff-initiated review based on the conditions that you placed on the project. You know, as that process wasn't well detailed, we kind of went the full nine yards with posting the property for the public hearing, doing a radius notice, doing an agency transmittal, publishing a legal in the newspaper. And through that process, we gathered these comments. And so, but yes, staff initiated that, the review of this project.
But my question was, when, when this board asked, put a, put a one-year review period, it was my understanding that the staff would, would do that and either approve it or not approve it. But it's reached us, for what reason?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, the condition reads, it would be a review by the board. And so again, without real strong sideboards as to how you would review that, we went full nine yards and put it on a public hearing agenda. Just, we didn't want to underdo it based on how much comment from the public was involved with this. We didn't want to leave the applicant exposed to, hey, we didn't quite do this right, let's do this all again. So we went the full nine yards on how we reviewed.
And the purpose of the review was to see if they were following the conditions that had been set forth by this board?
That's correct, yeah. To make sure that what you approved was going to work in the neighborhood. And if you heard any concerns that were rising to the level of we might need to revoke this conditional use, we would undertake that process. You might also hear comments from the applicant of thirty-one hundred sellers, the original applicant, that, hey, some of these conditions you put on here aren't working for us, and we might want to change those. Again, that's all subject to a future public hearing process.
That'd be a separate issue then, wouldn't it?
Correct, yeah. It's not, you're not weighing in on any changes to conditions today. The only thing that you really could do is say, we've heard enough issues that we want to start the process of revoking a conditional use. And they would, we would start down that path and be subject to a whole nother public hearing process.
But that's not what the staff's recommending.
Staff is not recommending that, no. Staff's recommending to allow them to continue under the conditions of approval in place, and that they're in compliance with their approval that you gave them.
Okay. And, go ahead.
Leon, did any of the concerns raised implicate a violation of the, any of the conditions of approval?
No, Chairman Commissioner Davidson, no. We researched everything from the opposition letter. We've been in constant conversation with that one neighbor in particular and other neighbors in the area. They've brought things to our attention. We've worked through that with either the, the owners of the winery in terms of, like, the sign being in the wrong place, that private event that was held, and whether or not that was a violation of, of the approval. And code enforcement, I believe, has been called out for other things as well, but everything that we've researched, the project, or the development is in compliance with the approval you gave it.
So the public testimony for this evening, should that be held, anything beyond the conditions of approval?
Chairman Commissioners, I think it should all be within the scope of whether or not this business is operating under the approval that you gave it, so.
So then, then, any, any public testimony should be either the conditions of approval are being met, or they're not being met?
I believe that would be a good way to lay things out.
Would that be appropriate?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Were any of the code enforcement complaints sustained?
Chairman Commissioners, no, there's no active code enforcement complaints. I confirmed that with our two code enforcement officers a couple weeks ago. They have been called out to the property to look at things, but all those matters have been resolved, so.
All right. So this isn't a normal application. This is just a review. Do we, do we have the, the applicant testify, start off with?
Chairman Commissioners, I believe that would be appropriate.
All right, all right. Anybody here from, from thirty-one hundred sellers? Okay. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. It's been a full one.
We've been here since early this morning.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Kekretz. I'm with Givens Persley Law Firm. I'm land use counsel.
I thought I recognized you.
Yes, I've been here on other things. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of thirty-one hundred sellers. With me tonight are Marshall and Haley Minder and Mary and Lee Parsons. They are the owners of thirty-one hundred sellers. And again, the last applicant mentioned this, but I do want to thank Leon Letson. I practice and do this all across the state, and working with your staff is always such a pleasure. He calls you back. He's reachable. It's just, I mean, which seems maybe like a low bar, but you really do have great staff here in your planning department. And so I really do want to commend you for that. He's always available to answer questions and really help us work through these issues as they come up. So we have a presentation.
Oh, my apologies. Let me pull that up here.
Can I move it forward with this, or do you have to do it?
That will advance the slides, so let me, give me just a minute to figure out how to make that shareable. I'm terrible at doing this from the PDF version.
Nope.
There we go.
Okay. So this is, as I mentioned, it's a family-owned business. Three of the members of this business, it's the parents and the, the daughter, the son-in-law, and the mom are all native Idahoans. And then Father Lee has been practicing medicine here in the Treasure Valley since the 1990s. This was really Haley, the daughter, sort of love, interest, is she got introduced to wines and wine-making in Switzerland when she was in college, and then she spent some time in Walla Walla, came back here and wanted to open up this vineyard with the help from her parents. So this is very much, the whole family is very involved in this. They're very interested in this. You'll notice this picture, there are two children there. Haley's with us tonight with a very brand-new baby. There are now three children. I'll need to update this picture. They've been really successful with this business. They specialize in more of the bubbly kind of wines, and they've received numerous accolades for their wines across the region. As Leon mentioned, the property is 10 acres. It's zoned rural residential and is located at 4004 Homer, which is approximately equidistant between Highway 55 and Highway 16, and then north off of Beacon Light Road. And it is within the Eagle American Viticultural Area, which is a federally recognized designated wine grape-growing region. And so Idaho does have a few of those, and we're pretty lucky to have those here. In this zoning, wineries do require a conditional use permit. Tonight, I really just want to focus on those conditions of approval and how they have endeavored to meet them. I do believe they have met everything, and they are in good standing, and we are going to ask that this CUP be continued indefinitely. Those, really, the big issues previously and over the last year have focused on traffic, noise, and lighting. For traffic, that one of the conditions of approval was that there were, could only be limited hours from 12 to 7:00 PM, only five days a week, and only 10 people per day during the weekends, weekdays, and 30 people per day on the weekends. With these, these constraints, they've actually only served 150 individuals over the last year. While they don't love how small the groups are that they're serving at this, at this point in time, they are able to operate within these constraints. They're not currently asking for any changes, nor would this be the right hearing to do it at. And so the limited hours have been working and have been limiting the impact on the neighborhood. As to having a prior event, prior to having their liquor license, that was not actually a winery-related event. That was actually a classroom C W I came out on entomology, and they had a one-afternoon class to learn about bugs and whatever else happens to live on vineyards. They have not, they are allowed to have just very small special events with no more than 50 people, and because of their numbers, they've chosen to host none of them to date. They also cannot have more than 20 large trucks visiting the property per year. It's one of those things that if we were to come back and revisit the conditions, we'd want to really figure out what a large truck is. But as far as they have had, you know, smaller delivery trucks, but no, any, no semi-trailers, any sort of really large trucks have come to the property. Noise, one of the requirements is that there is no music or amplified sound. There was a complaint in November of 2023. An officer came out and they determined the complaint to be unfounded. They were not playing music at the time. It was early in the evening, and the complaint occurred as a wine tasting that was benefiting, benefiting the St. Al's Cancer Institute was finishing up. The Minders, they went to the effort to file a public records request to find any information about this complaint, and there was nothing filed. Like, there's no record of this complaint really existing, and so they weren't able to take further steps to alleviate the concerns, to learn more about it. They just know that they spoke to a code compliance officer, and it was ultimately determined to be unfounded, and that was the beginning and end of it. The lighting was required to be screened and approved by the director, which it was. The lighting plan was approved by the director. There was, again, a complaint in February of 2024 about lights being left on. They, Deputy Ada County Sheriff's Office Deputy Horan, met with them. The lights apparently were not on, and all the lights are screened. At that time, he did find the complaint to be unfounded as well. This is another one of those, that if we revisit these in the future, we would, they'd be coming back and asking to have, rather than it just saying have all lighting screened, have it tied to some sort of measurable output, like number of lumens visible at the property boundaries, or something of that nature, because it's just so much easier when you have conditions that are measurable versus screen your lighting. But these are things that we all learn as we go along. The neighbor has, and I think I just touched on the class at C W I, and also, the bird laser is, it was raised before, is my understanding. It's been raised again. It is part of the agricultural operation, which is outside of the CUP. The CUP is for the winery. The grape-growing is the ag use that's already allowed on the property. To be short, they have complied with all conditions of approval. It's not entirely, as you noted, it's not entirely clear what the requirement is in the code, in your order, as to having future review hearings or not, or how they're done. But because we have been in compliance with all of the conditions of approval, we ask that these be discontinued. There are ways in the code, if there were to be big violations, to address those at the time, and so we would just ask for that. And I will stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead.
So this is kind of like your report card.
Yes.
You're reporting how you guys did. So what was the complaint with the bird laser, and why do you feel that can be separated from the other conditions?
Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, it's my understanding that at the last CUP hearing a year ago, there was questions about the bird laser. I was not involved at that time. The Menders could address it. Since then, in the letter that you received from one of the neighbors, they said that they didn't like the bird laser and they would like it removed. There's nothing in the actual conditions of approval that talk about a bird laser, but it was raised in the letter. Leon mentioned it, and so I just thought that I would mention it. But that's not part of the winery itself. That's part of more of the grape-growing operation, because it's a detraction. It detracts birds from coming to the property.
And it's not one of the conditions of approval?
It is not with the conditions of approval.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And does the mentor, do you wish to testify?
No, that's okay. If you have questions.
Congratulations. Looks like a new baby. Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board? Okay, thank you. I have two people signed up. Cameron Needham? Not here. James Needham?
Just no comment.
Okay. All right. I have, I have nobody. Oh.
May I come up?
Sure. Give us your name when you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me. My name is David Brook. I live at 4001 West Homer Road, directly south of the property. And I'm not here to seek any revocation or anything like that. It's, but what I would request, respectfully request, would be a continuance of this, of this condition, simply because the infrastructure hasn't been built, which would be akin to putting in a football stadium that hadn't been built, and then expecting to see the results of the impact from that when it hadn't been built yet, because nobody's come. In terms of, they've had private reservation, people only, you know, show up, and they, we would really appreciate it if they could drive onto the property, but there's no parking lot yet there yet, so that they could not park on our side of the road. lot yet there yet, so that they could not park on our side of the road, because they, they sit there and, and we observed them out on our property times, just not sure what. And we have found feces and urine on that side since, since this whole process has begun. And, you know, my boys play out along there and stuff, so, but, I mean, that's really a minor issue in terms of something that could be dealt with. If, if they could just get the parking off the street. My wife has called in and tried to Ada County Highway District and is a bit frustrated. She, that's Adrian Hendricks, and she's also been the one that's called in on the Ada County Sheriff's quite a bit. But that's her frustration, is if we could just get no parking signs or something there. And I don't know who the jurisdiction is of that to accomplish that, but it would be really nice to get that off. But in terms of doing a fair analysis of this probation, not probationary period, but, you know, let's see how this operates for a year, it's really benign request in the sense of, of, of requesting that it be another year, because it's, there's really nothing to be done on, on the commissioner's side. It's just the input of the people around there, so that when, if and when it does get fully developed and built out, then we can, then we can see. But at this point in time, there, there's none of that future infrastructure's there yet. People don't even have a place to pull up there and park and, and, and maybe part of the sewage, you know, the on-site disposal system and, and all that may be part of what might remedy what we're finding on our, it's not a lot, but, but we are finding it on, in our trees on the side there. And, you know, I get in and through there and stuff and it's just like, whoa, you know, it's just something you shouldn't be seeing. To the point of the laser, we weren't asking for it to be removed, just relocate it, because it's right across directly from my John and Shirley Hendricks residence. And it flashes and their, their dog just goes crazy. And, and so it's in the middle of the day at times. And this, this is a story I heard from a few years ago and, and I don't know if it's still an issue, but, but they're kind of Kansas City formal, they're not going to play. They, they get along great with the neighbors and, you know, and they have their opinions, but they don't voice them. They don't really particularly prefer this development here, but, you know, it just, it is what it is. So I don't have a, really I care one way or the other, because there's never been anything that has occurred yet for me to say, oh, hey, this is like way out of bounds from what they said they would do, because it hadn't been developed yet. So just really maybe looking at another year would, would be, would be my request. But, and I'm not quite sure of, of, when Leon was speaking, what was going on there, because he says he hasn't received anything from the county sheriff's office and I, I can't say, I haven't been calling him up and making any complaints, but my wife sure has. So maybe that, they don't rise to the level of where that interaction would take place? I don't know. But I'm hearing that there hasn't been any interaction and that just, something doesn't sound right there. So I, I would, I don't know the avenue of looking into that, but.
Well, code enforcement is the sheriff's department. He did say code enforcement's been out there.
Oh, okay. All right. And maybe I misheard in terms of sheriffs and, and law enforcement, but.
Yeah, code enforcement or deputies.
Yeah, yeah, she has, okay. So that's really all I got to say.
All right. Any questions? No questions?
Well, I'll.
Go ahead.
So the thing with the poop, are you saying that people are having their dogs back there or what?
The people, yeah, they're, some folks.
Saying people are going to the bathroom on the ground?
I'm not saying all of them, I'm finding evidence of it. And, you know, to me, I mean, once, it's just, you know, it's enough there where it's, you can come out and look at it, it's out there still.
No thanks, I'll pay.
I haven't seen them do it, but that's where they all park and it, it hasn't been there before. And there's not a lot of it, but there's some of it. And my wife has gone.
You're making assumptions.
Well, yeah, I'm not an eyewitness to it, no.
All right.
All right.
Nor do I tend to, you know, it could be a cyclist for all I know on the side, but it hasn't been an issue until this has happened where they're parking on the side of the red. But we have eyewitnessed them being out of their car and on our property.
Okay.
And we've gone up to talk to them and we haven't gotten very good reaction or responses for people parking there. You know, what are you doing sitting there and, and just trying to chit-chat and there isn't anybody else up and down that street. We get a lot of scenics, you know, people up there for the scenery, but it's further down where it's more open and they can out, look over. But this is just where they're, they're waiting to get in, I guess, and sometimes they're out there 10 or 15 minutes waiting.
I'll ask a question to staff. So what's the conditions for parking and them being on the street and anything related?
Chairman Commissioners, there's no prohibition on parking on Homer Road right now. That would be Ada County Highway District's issue to resolve, it sounds like. Mr. Brooks and his wife have talked to them and that's outside of us. There is a proposed parking lot for the winery that would be developed when they are ready to spend the money on that. It is a part of their approval, they could have that on their property, but it, to date, hasn't been constructed, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I don't have anybody else here listed to testify. Is there anyone else? Okay, go ahead. Okay, you, you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Beck, Commissioners. I'll be, I'll be brief and short. I've, I've been to the property and I, oh, I should introduce myself. I'm Steve Burnell. I'm at 4952 North Gooder John Lane. I'm at the far west end of Homer Road. And I'm just, mostly as a point of interest, last night, the, the City of Eagle approved a new winery for Amanda and myself, and we'll be opening that in a couple of years on Homer Road. And we don't have near the restrictions that these guys are operating under. And so, and it was even argued last night, people brought up 3100 Sellers that, saying that, well, you know, maybe they could be the role model for Homer Road wineries. And Eagle, in their wisdom, realized that 3100 is so restricted that they can barely run a business. And so, therefore, anyway, they, they approved our winery last night with far less restrictions and allowed us to have more people onsite and to actually function as a winery. These guys are essentially being asked to swim upstream with their hands cuffed and their feet shackled. So, anyway, that was just a point of interest, but as far as, as far as the bird lasers, I have, I have bird lasers on my vineyard as well. They are standard agriculture practice, should be protected by the Right to Farm Act. So that's why it's standard ag stuff.
And the, the prohibition of a bird laser was not a condition of approval as well, so.
Right, exactly. So it's a non-issue to you guys. So, anyway, that was it. I just wanted to let you know that these guys are, these guys are stand-up citizens. There's, there's an incredible amount of, for lack of a better term, not-in-my-backyard type people that live on that end of Homer Road and they're going to do everything they can to muddy the waters and make these guys look bad.
Oh, we heard most of them too.
Yeah. Exactly. And I've heard a lot of them myself. So, anyway, that was it, just, just a point of interest there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anyone else here that wishes to say a few words?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, apparently not. Okay, you can give a rebuttal if you'd like, but of course, this is not a zoning application, so I don't know if a rebuttal is, this is just a, a one-year review.
I, thank you Commissioners. I will be extremely brief just to address a couple of the issues that have come up. There is a parking lot on the property at parks 10 to 12. There were plans originally for an additional overflow parking lot as well as additional infrastructure. However, at this time, because they're so limited on the number of people they can have come to the property and they've chosen to not hold any special events, they're not going to be moving forward with those infrastructure improvements, because they don't, it just wouldn't make sense. They don't have the way to pay for that by bringing the people to the property. They have just had those couple of interactions that I mentioned with the Ada County Sheriff's Office. There was also an email exchange at some point in the year. They've not heard anything from ACHD about road issues, parking issues, anything of that nature. Nor have those issues been raised to them by the sheriff's office. No one walks to the property. They don't know why people would be doing things on the side of the road. There were some issues, there were more people waiting on the side of the road when they were first to get into the property, when they were still working on developing the entrance. And so that did slow people down a little bit and they did recognize that there were, in that first couple of few months, there were more people parking out there on the road while the construction was occurring and they were trying to get in at the same time of, as construction. But since that time, they just don't feel like there's been any issues at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, inasmuch as this is not as regular, do we need to close the public hearing?
Chairman Commissioners, I think you probably should close for testimony, since we've opened it for testimony.
But do we need to, to have anything added to the record?
Chairman Commissioners, I will add the presentation provided by 3100 Sellers as an exhibit to the record, as well as my own presentation.
Okay. Well, in that case, then I will close the public hearing on application 2021-02-022-CUMSPR, the 3100 Sellers, as this was a one-year review. And so the question before us is, do we accept the one-year review? And that's it, that's the only question, correct?
Chairman Commissioners, that's correct, yes.
Now, we can, we can suggest that there, well, if we accept the one-year review, then that's it, right?
Yeah, Chairman Commissioners, I brought to your attention the actual condition language provided with the conditional use. It's here on the screen and it says, "A review of the project by the Ada County Board of Commissioners shall occur one year from the commencement of the use." It doesn't talk about repeated reviews.
All right.
So, yeah.
Well, then that's clear to me that, that, that's what it is. And, and, and if there are, because the conditions of approval still stand, correct?
Chairman Commissioners, that's right.
And if the, and, and if the mentors want to modify those, they would have to go through the process of modification or expand them or whatever. They could, they could do that at any time, correct?
Yes, Chairman Commissioners, that would be a new conditional use, a potentially master site plan process as well and full public hearing process.
Right. And I think the reason that, that the board did this at the time was we had such a large outpouring of opposition and we, we, we were trying to, just to make sure that the, that the conditions of approval were followed and, and, and that's what this has done. I haven't seen any evidence that all the conditions have not been fully met and any evidence that, that those conditions will not be, be continued. Correct? All right, the hearing's closed and is there, is there any other discussion?
Well, I would, I would agree with the chair. I think they've substantially complied with the conditions of approval. There are only a few minor complaints. No code enforcement actions were sustained. The complaints have largely been resolved. You know, the, the, the bird laser is not a part of the application, but I would just say if there is any way you could reorient it in a way that wouldn't bother the neighbors, you might consider that. But again, that's not a part of this complaint, so. We didn't have any, the, the people that signed up to testify that didn't show up, did we have any information on them?
Nobody signed up, you mean, an email on, online?
Did, did we have a few people that signed up and didn't?
No.
Chairman Commissioners, we've had no additional folks.
No, everybody that signed up has testified, a couple, one extra.
Well, considering how, how active the testimony was when we originally approved this, I would have felt that if there were violations, we would have seen a lot more people showing up. So that tells me that they've been trying to be good neighbors and complying with the conditions. And I'm, I'm comfortable approving their one-year review. And if they, of course, as the staff said, want to come back and revisit conditions at another time, it's their prerogative to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. They, they have met the requirements that were established and that this is the review. I think we can accept the review as, as stated and, and move forward.
I'll accept the motion.
I move, we, we accept the review of application 2021-02-022-CU-MSP-R, RXREF-2021-02-02A, 3100 Sellers, as given to us tonight and we accept that review as, as acceptable.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. Mr. Leon, is there any further business to be brought before this board tonight?
Chairman, no, I don't think there is.
Well, then we're adjourned.